Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this August 21st meeting of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors. We're going to start with a brief invocation by Supervisor Gould, and if you'd remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, thank you.
Not uncomfortable.
Please join me in prayer. Lord, we thank you and praise you for this day, and we praise you for this great nation that you've given us, Lord, where we get to practice and experiment in self-government. We thank you for this county. We pray for the wisdom to run it properly, Lord. We pray for our employees, that many of them have dangerous jobs, and we pray they come home safely to the loving arms of their family. We pray for our soldiers, sailors, airmen, marines, and space guardians. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Do we mean the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board of Supervisors made by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorneys on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A, 3, 4, and 7. Looking for a motion in action to call for an executive session to be held on September 5th, 2023 at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A, 3, 4, and 7, to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterisk.
So moved.
For that motion, in that second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As per to have it, do have its order. Official business to come before the board. Discussion of pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands. Attorney Esplin.
Nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you. Committee and/or legislative reports. Supervisor Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended the workforce development meeting and also all other meetings I've been attending via Zoom to cut down on my travel expenses based on our budget problems. Getting used to the idea. That's all.
Thank you. Supervisor Angus.
Nothing this morning.
Thank you. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to take a point of personal privilege. Someone brought it to my attention last week when I prayed that I had neglected the personnel of Space Force. So I looked up currently the personnel of Space Force are called airmen, but they will be changed to space guardians shortly. So you may have heard my request for blessings upon the members of Space Force and the space guardians, but thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Been talking to the Utah Attorney General's Office, and they'll be talking with our county attorneys about joining in with their lawsuit against BLM. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Last week on Thursday, I attended the Governor's Water Policy Council Rural Groundwater Committee. That committee is tasked with providing recommendations for new rural groundwater protections, hopefully to be enacted in the next legislative session. Those recommendations are due by December. Anybody that is looking to stay informed and updated on the Water Policy Council, go to the ADWR webpage, and they have a whole page there dedicated to the Water Policy Council and both committees. The Assured Water Supply Committee, which is largely concerned with what goes on in the active management areas in our state, the other committee being the Rural Groundwater Management Committee, and I'm glad to be a part of that with Jeannie Kelly from Mojave County Water Authority. The other thing you'll see water-wise on our agenda today is a comment letter on the Bureau of Reclamation's Supplemental Environmental Impact Statement process, and our letter basically says that the SEIS fails to account for water losses or water cuts to our river communities who have no other water options, really. So asking for the Bureau of Reclamation to take that into account because water loss along the Colorado River is detrimental, unlike some of the central Arizona cities. We have no high ground report this morning. County manager's report. Manager Elters.
Good morning, Chairman and Board members. I have a couple of items to highlight. First one is related to the Arizona 811. This is a nonprofit communication center that facilitates pre-excavation digging notification in Arizona. It's, you probably heard, knows know what's below, call or click before you dig. It really promotes the safety and welfare of communities as well as protecting underground facilities from damage. So one of our own employee Laura Achley, who is with Public Works Traffic Control Division, has garnered the recognition and is receiving a certificate of honor for fulfilling the agency's highest standards in excavation damage prevention and safety. The Arizona 811 will also be presenting Laura, our employee, with a challenge coin, and she will be recognized at a future ceremonies. That's one. The other, I'm happy to also report to you that Mojave County Procurement Department has earned the 2023 Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award. As you know, this is designed to measure and provide benchmarks for public procurement, best practices, and for your information, Mojave County is one of 194 agencies in both the United States and Canada that received this award, and only one of 45 counties to receive it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members.
Thank you, Manager Elters. All right, we'll move into the call to the public. The first signed up is Jeannie Kench. Morning.
Thank you very much for having me. I'm here speaking about Agenda Item 008 on the Consent Agenda. Chairman Lingerfelter and Board. According to ARS 16821B, the Board of Supervisors, upon the recommendation of the county chairman, shall determine when a vacancy exists in the office of precinct committeemen. The criteria used to establish when a vacancy exists in the office of precinct committeemen is found in ARS 38291. This statute states, "An office shall be deemed vacant from and after the occurrence of many events," two, of the events of who the person holding the office, I can't read, I'm sorry, who the person holding the office ceases to discharge the duties of three, for three consecutive months, or an offense involving a violation of the person's official duties. Not only was it voted in favor by the MCRCC Executive Committee to censor the PCs in question, but the Executive Committee also agreed to file a workplace injunction so that said PCs were banned from the headquarters in Bullhead City, preventing the toxic environment. It was agreed by the Executive Committee that their inappropriate behavior was dividing the party and harming our function of garnering Republican voters. Additionally, the Mojave County Republican Central Committee PC applicants agree and sign our application that state they are to assist the Mojave Republican Party in its goal of working toward party unity and electing Republican candidates. Chairman Lingerfelter and Board, as the leader of the Mojave County Republican Party, it is my job to garner more Republican voters, more Republican volunteers, and more Republican PCs. It is also my job to do all I can to protect our party's goals and our party volunteers. There are clearly two types of precinct committee members, elected and appointed. It is clear, ARS 16821A, that members elect the elected PCs, even though there is an appointment process with the BOS every other October, allowing for the candidates that filled their signatures with the Elections Department to be deemed elected instead of on the ballot. This saves the county money, and there is less of a ballot. Without a candidate competition, there is no need for a ballot. Those deemed elected can vote for the Executive Committee and attend the state mandatory meeting as a state committeeman, and those that are appointed may not. I am not asking to vacate any elected PCs. I strongly feel if the people voted, or in our case, signed the petition to put the candidates on the ballot, then the people would have to recall that precinct committeeman. I am only asking to vacate two precinct committee members that I mistakenly appointed just months ago. The toxic environment coming from District 2 headquarters forced me to temporarily close the office. A half a minute, please, sir.
We've got quite a few.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to pull that item off of the consent calendar, and she can discuss it at that time.
We might bring you back up, Assessor Kench, if that's okay. We've got a bunch of public forums to go through. I think one of our supervisors is going to pull this item, and you'll be called back up to give more comments.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Barb Carpenter.
Good morning, Chairman Lingerfelter and Board members. I hate that I have to be here today.
Excuse me. Ma'am, can you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm Barbara Carpenter.
Thank you.
I live here in Kingman.
Thank you.
And I'm a precinct committeeman, and as I said, I hate to have to be here today, but I feel it's incumbent upon me to make a statement. I continue to wonder when our own precinct committeeman decided it was better to attack, smear, and denigrate others in our party instead of sitting down and discussing their perceived grievances or concerns. Precinct committeemen, when appointed, agree to and are charged with working toward a common goal. When their own wants take precedence over that common goal and cause constant dissonance, I can see no reason to support that negative influence. Requesting the censure of state representatives for decision and actions they took that do not directly impact Mojave County GOP is uncalled for. Demanding resignations when they have only recently been appointed as precinct committeemen does nothing more than create turmoil and undermines the work that we, as precinct committeemen, have signed up for. If they have issues, step up and run for office. Make yourself known and change things in that manner. There are many PCs in Bullhead City that I respect and admire. Quite a few of them disagree with me on this current issue, but I can and will put those disagreements aside for the good of the party and this next election. With a less-than-honest county recorder and Board of Supervisor Chairman in Maricopa County, we don't have time for infighting. We have work to do, and unfortunately, we need to remove those that believe their own agenda comes before the agreement they made in order to become appointed precinct committeemen. I hope you'll support the authorization to create these two precinct committeeman vacancies, and I hope that we can bring these two people back into the party on a level playing field. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Esposito.
Jennifer Esposito, candidate for District 4 County Supervisor. I'd like to just start out by quickly saying that I approve of Consent Agenda Item 21. The equal system has been very effective, and it tends to resolve disputes over signature verification, and I support that. I used that when I was a candidate for the state legislature. I think that's a good thing. Also going to weigh in really quick on Agenda Item 8. I think the duties of a precinct committeeman are really basically to attend the meetings, to vote, to be present, to, you know, encourage voter things. The problem that we seem to be having is whether or not you have the authority to remove them. I do not believe that the statutes are being correctly interpreted. I do not think that you have that legal authority. As they say, it's a big tent, but be careful what you wish for. You know, if you can't, if you can't respect someone's right to dissent or hold their elected officials accountable, you know, where's the line for free speech? I don't know these women, and I don't really care to know them, but I don't think that you have the authority to do it. Lastly, I would like to discuss something that has come up at a couple of meetings, which is open lot storage. During the discussion of the cargo container issue and whatnot, I repeatedly heard staff going, "Open lot storage, open lot storage. You can only do this, that, and the other with open lot storage. You only use so much of your property." Not one of them apparently had the fortitude or the intelligence, the reading comprehension, to go back into their own code and look at the definition for open lot storage. I know that Mr. Esplin is well aware of statutory construction. I'm fairly certain that Supervisor Gould understands statutory construction. I really hope running for Senate, that Supervisor Angus understands statutory construction. So the definition controls everything that comes after that. So we're not looking at Chapter 37, we're looking at Chapter 8 definitions. And open lot storage says, "The use of a property for the storage or keeping of materials or equipment necessary for a business outside of a building when allowed by the zone, but does not include a junkyard," is defined in this ordinance. So it's clear that when this ordinance was written, it was targeted at someone like my son-in-law at Barker's Electric, who has a business lot and stores boom trucks and electrical, probably wiring and all kinds of odds and ends stuff. I don't know why. Mojave County seems to be the only county with open lot storage, but if you're not storing business equipment, not one single word of Chapter 37 on residential property or even business property applies if you're not storing business equipment. I think that staff needs to stop harassing people. I'm just giving you my legal opinion for whatever it's worth. Thank you very much.
Robert Smith.
Good morning, Chairman, Board, and Staff. Yeah, I'm here to speak in regard to the BLM presentation that's coming up in your agenda with the Conservation and Health Rule for public lands. And my question to the presentator is why, in this review of this, I have found no regard for a passage of, I quote, "Federal Land Policy and Management Act, the FLPNA in 1976. Congress directed BLM to retain most remaining public lands, significantly reducing the acreage available for sale or exchange." The FLPNA repealed the Homestead Act with the exception of Alaska, where it was separately repealed in 1986. Sales of selected parcels may occur where and when they are determined to be in the public's best interest and consistent with approved land use plans that have been developed with public involvement and environmental analysis. Such parcels must meet one of three criteria, and there's three bullet points. They are, one, selected, isolated tracts that are difficult or uneconomic to manage; two, they were acquired for specific purpose and are no longer needed for that purpose; or disposing of them will serve important public objectives such as community expansion or economic development. With my review of the item under the government's website reviewing all this, it looks like they've totally disregarded this, and it's just another land grab to make profit for foreign companies, especially China, to come in and put these silly solar panels and wind towers all over our public land and take away the beauty of our desert. And that's what I am here to be in total opposition to that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. For those that have not yet spoken, when you come up to the podium, if I could ask you to start with stating your name. Chuck DeShazer, and that's for our clerk of the board.
Yes, my name's Chuck DeShazer. I live at 8778 Polaris Road in Topock. I'd like to request of this board this morning to pull Consent Agenda Item Number 12 for later discussion, and then I'd like to speak on, I'd like this board to consider doing one of three things, either asking for the resignation of Sam Elters, or having him do his job and control the, what he's supposed to be managing, or just fire him outright because obviously, we're getting things in front of this board on a regular basis that have never been asked for, such as, you know, regulation of chickens, storage containers, RVs, all kinds of things that the boards never asked for these things. They just obviously have too much time over Development Services to come up with new regulations and ideas on what they want to do. We've seen several people come down here and speak in front of this board, asking for abatements of properties that are just disgusting, and it goes on for years and nothing gets done, but yet I get moved to the front of the line because Sam can't control his people over there and, you know, goes after personal vendettas from, you know, everybody at the top over at Development Services, and I find this to be totally wrong. You know, we're just in a place, you can see, there's a bunch of people showed up today. It used to be you'd come into this room, and there'd be five people sitting in this room. Now, you're starting to upset the entire county. I wish you'd like, consider what I'm saying today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Pamela. I might get it wrong. Sim? S.I. Smith, okay. I couldn't read that. Excuse me. Pamela Smith.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors. Pamela Smith, Bullhead City. I don't have anything written up. I am here on Item Number 8. The reason I am here is I'm a newly appointed PC. I hesitated over the last couple of years to sign up as a PC because the environment at the Bullhead office was not friendly and not inviting to people that actually wanted to work for the cause. So I am here in support of Item Number 8, in support of the county chairperson. Unfortunately, if she can't do her job as written in the bylaws, myself will resign, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Steve DiAmico.
Steve DiAmico, Bullhead City. Thank you, Chairman and Board. I'm here for Item Number 8 also. I have witnessed this turmoil in our local GOP in Bullhead City personally during my election. There were multiple bylaws broken during that election. There's a small group down there that are dividing our party, and we don't need this. This is the most important election of our lifetime coming up, and we need to all get along. It's a shame that it came to legal action, and it's a shame that we're here today. People should just be able to get along, regardless if you like each other or not. This is for the better of our country. Some of the stuff that I seen during my election, I was running against Ashley Garrich, and they put her sign on the GOP Christmas float during, during the election. Did not offer mine. They put hers in the window, did not offer mine. They were endorsing, endorsing her, did not offer mine. If you know the bylaws for the local GOP, you do not endorse anyone during a primary. And I even feel uncomfortable even going in their office as their elected mayor. So I hope you agree with Jeannie Kench and pass this, and I hope this sends a message that we all need to get along, and hopefully this doesn't have to come up again. Thank you.
Thank you. Bernie Yuzinski.
Yes, my name is Bernie Yuzinski from Fort Mojave, Arizona. I would like to resound the comments made earlier by my friend Bob Smith over the BLM action. I strongly oppose it like himself. My wife and I moved to this great state three years ago from the Midwest. In our community back home, we have countless wind turbines dotting the landscape. It has taken away quite a bit of the beauty of it. None of the power stays there to benefit the communities that we lived in. I agree with everything that he says. I agree with everything that is stated in the actions of the government instituting all the BLM restrictions, and for them just to change everything and just for the possibility of foreign entities being able to profit is totally wrong. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir. Misty Devini.
I'm Misty Devini of Bullhead City. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Before you do, to the overreach of power by the Board of MCRCC, I am here for the amazing PC commitment of District 2 as their elected District 2 Director of MCRCC. The MRCR board is now in derelict duty by closing District 2 office for, under Section 4, Clause 3 of Organization, states there is to be three districts. These districts service GOP constituents in their relative areas. MRCR board is the cause of the enabling division by limiting growth, prosperity, and practice of the Republican Party. Closing down District 2 office for three and a half weeks violates that clause. I am not the disruption of GOP. I am the reality of an everyday American trying to make a positive, productive change, supporting the Republican Party and defeating the oppression of our current national administration. Agenda Item Number 8. I am a law-abiding citizen and appealing the injunction against me today. I feel any further actions taken against me should be postponed until the conclusion of all process of court proceedings is concluded. My involvement within the MRCR district 2 started just 159 days ago, in the short amount of time of a non-election year. I have volunteered over 200-plus hours, helped America First dinner, getting Scott Pressler here at your request, Ms. Hildy Angus, that is promoting the Republican Party. The next day... supporting the Republican Party and defeating the oppression of our current national administration. Agenda item number eight. I am a law-abiding citizen and appealing the injunction against me today. I feel any further actions taken against me should be postponed until the conclusion of all process of court proceedings is concluded. My involvement within the MCRCC District Two started just a hundred and fifty-nine days ago in the short amount of time of a non-election year. I have volunteered over two hundred-plus hours, helped America First Dinner, getting Scott Pressler here at your request, Ms. Hildy Angus, that is promoting the Republican Party. The next day, on the seventh, I produced a voter registration training held by Scott Pressler here in Bullhead City, and it is the only voter registration training held in District Two since signing up in March and being approved in April. At the suggestion of a gun show for voter registration event in B- Bullhead City, I accepted full responsibility of the three-day event in which District Two PC volunteers obtained three voter registrations, seventy-nine volunteers for hand-count ballots, and I attained seventy signatures to run for city council. The most significant achievements in being not, was being nominated from the floor and voted in by handwritten ballots, because I was nominated from the floor within a hundred and thirty-seven days of being a PC. And I won against the mayor's wife, Mrs. Barbara Houston. It is my effectiveness and not my ineffectiveness proving to the nation the Republican Party is destroying itself from within its own organization. I only hope you uphold the authority or non-authority of the statutes that are within you today, and I oppose this removal of myself and other PCs.
Thank you, ma'am. Pamela Ford?
Good morning, Chairman and Board of Supervisors. I'm Pamela Ford from Lake Havasu, and I am the Treasurer of the Mojave County Republican Central Committee on the Executive Committee. I totally agree with PC member Barbara Carpenter, and most of my write-up was basically what she was going to say, so I will add something different. The only thing that I do want to add is that I also disagree with decisions made in this county and with our Republican Committee, but I have never asked the ones I disagree with to resign or to attack them verbally in any form of social media. We need to let these disruptors know that we cannot allow this behavior to continue. If they disagree with any decision, they verbally attack with emails and with text messages. I hope you agree with the vacancy request made by Ginny Kench and the Executive Board of the Mojave County Republican Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Philip Robinson? Philip Robinson? Take your time.
Morning, y'all. Philip Robinson, Golden Valley. Again, I'm standing up here for accountability. Number one, G V I D, accountability there on the engineer. Then going downhill, well, let's go uphill. We go to the Roads Department Manager, then all the way to County Manager, and then to the County Attorney. Every one of them need to be stepped down. This is getting old, coming up here, and if things don't start happening besides going after the boy that caused the damage, it should roll downhill, not up, or it needs to go uphill. Instead of starting down at the bottom and letting him go to Kingman, which I'll be talking to the mayor. But these three managers need to be dismissed, plus the manager that's taking care of Golden Valley or G V I D. She needs to be off there. She lied in court, and he knows it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name is Jem Morgane. I'm a Kingman resident. I'm here today in the capacity as the Executive Director of Real Change PAC, Nonpartisan PAC focusing on ten common ground issues. Accountability of our government is one of those ten issues that motivates the PAC activism. So what I'm here today is to talk about the agenda item eight. And the only authority this board has today with that issue is whether or not the request meets the standard of law. That's it. No content discussion, because you are not, contrary to historic work here, you are not a legislative extension of the Republican Party. You are here to make a determination of whether that request meets the law and either approve or deny it based on that. That's it. So the request that was submitted, I have a copy of it, and the Chair is correct that the Chair does have the authority to vacate a seat. According to that statute, it is based on the criteria, the criteria used to establish is when a vacancy exists, and that is based on thirty-eight two ninety-one. She does reference that in her request. There are actually twelve reasons within that law that can vacate. She cited two, seven, cease to discharge duties, and eight, either a felony conviction or violation of official duties. So this all hinges on official duties. So A R S sixteen eight twenty-two E, which she also cites, why is that? She also cites a list essentially three. Assist party in voter registration, assist party on election days, and additional duties as provided in the State Committee bylaws, which she stipulates in her request that the state is silent on that. Nowhere in this does it say anything about county bylaws, county oaths, nothing. That does not rise to the level of the, what the state laws require. So the reasons that she cites are unbecoming conduct, moral turpitude, bad behavior that they want to, and I get it. Let me tell you, when Mary McCord Robinson, who is my best friend when she was Chair of the Democratic Party, every single day, I am certain that she wanted to submit the same vacancy request of my position as PC under her. We butted heads every single day. But I would not want this board to get involved in party politics when it is the party's problem about that dissension within, not the authority of this board. This request does not rise to the level of requirements cited in the state statute. You are, it is incumbent upon you to deny this request for that reason. If she wants to resubmit with the evidence that meets the law, that's fine. But on this request, you need to deny. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Christopher Dante, Mojave County taxpayer. In the Book of Matthew, Jesus told a Pharisee, "You shall love the Lord your God with all your heart, with all your soul, and with all your mind. This is the first and great commandment, and the second is like it. You shall love your neighbor as yourself. On these two hang all the law and the prophets." In twenty twenty-three in Mojave County, Arizona, how are we doing in God's eyes? Are we honoring and keeping His commandment? Are we loving Him in the all-consuming way He requires? How are we treating one another? Do we truly love our neighbors as ourselves? Do we really believe that all the law hangs on these two commandments? Reading through this agenda today, I see dissension, finger pointing, and quite frankly, hatred directed at each other. In stark contrast to what God has commanded, I see lust for power, self-aggrandizement, and righteous anger in our hearts. And as a sinful woman, I plead guilty as charged. But if the last three years has taught us anything, it's that fallen man is corrupt and incapable of redemption without God's saving grace. If we are to survive as a nation, as a county, as a neighborhood, we must return to biblical principles in obedience to God. We must love God with all our hearts, all our souls, and all our minds, and absolutely love our neighbor as ourselves. And that said, I'm opposed to item eight. And I'm a novice here, you know, as I read the item and the five pages, I see five pages behind it, nothing else. I mean, the lack of supporting documentation, I think, would make it impossible to be for or against. And if I were in your seat, I would wonder how this strongly worded accusation against these two women even made it to the agenda with no real backup, at least for public consumption. I mean, don't we get to see what it is? I mean, in part, these ladies alleged conduct. Conduct includes acts of moral turpitude, which I find alarming. I mean, Merriam-Webster said moral turpitude is an act or behavior that gravely violates the sentiment or accepted standard of the community, a quality of dishonesty or other immorality that is determined by a court to be present in the commission of a criminal offense. I mean, wow, criminals at work in our precincts? Of course they must go, but, but wait. How can they be prosecuted and removed without due process? Where's the defense? How can you vote to remove them based strictly on this one-page accusation? Whatever happened to innocent till proven guilty? Does this not apply to Republican precinct committee workers? And for anyone with no knowledge of this subject, which is me, and who hasn't heard any rumor, opinion, or innuendo, I think it's impossible to vote one way or the other. Let's take a breath, devote some time to research and educate ourselves, then a reasonable decision could be reached. But as for today, based on the lack of information available here, you must vote now. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Chairman Travis Linkfelter and our board members. I-
Could you state your name, please?
Oh, yeah. Carrie Asel from Fort Mojave, Arizona. Thank you. I'm the past Director of the Bullhead City District Two Office. And I was, it was the, in the past January, I, I resigned in July eighth, okay? And our politerian, Ron Gould, was there, present. But the reason I resigned was all this drama within our office that was brought into our office, and it was very wearing on my family. And I brought these, these issues to our Chairwoman Ginny Kench, and they were never addressed. Our duly-elected Fire Board Member, Rose Jacobs, was verbally attacked by Mr. Jim Fuller. Rose, I reached out to Rose, I reached out to Jim. I says, "I want you both to give me what happened." And I forwarded it to Ginny Kench, never heard a word. So things weren't addressed from above. And here is on my phone, I can play this. And this is Jim Fuller. I don't know if you can get my phone-
Can I get the screen up, please?
Here we go. Okay. So this is Mr. Fuller in my office, in our office, with Rose Jacobs. We had many members there, and this is what he caused Rose Jacobs to do. And he was assaulting, verbally assaulting her about Scott Pressler as our guest speaker at our GOP America First Dinner. Okay? So I want this on the record, that he is the problem, one of the main problems that we had. But Rose was done with the drama, so she, she backed out. She's a valuable asset to MCRCC. And this is the, the, the things I had to deal with regularly, try to keep the office functioning, which just became impossible to do. And let me also correct Mr., our mayor, Steve D'Amico. Bill Hart paid for that float. It wasn't at MCRCC. Bill Hart invited many people to-
Thank you for speaking today. Thank you. Armin Stange?
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors.
You state your name, and, thank you, sir.
Armin Schlanga, forty-three, twenty-one, South Cavalry Road, Fort Mojave. This property here, it's supposed to be vacant land. I don't know how, but does it look vacant? Not to me. So Mr. Baker owns forty-three sixty South Infantry Road. He has people living there with no electricity, with no septic, on vacant land. I hear the generator running twenty-four-seven. It's a nuisance to me. I live over three hundred feet away, more than three hundred feet, and I still hear the generator. The neighbors, an immediate neighborhood, hear the generator all night long. So I don't know why the county isn't doing anything on vacant land and rental properties. The code on this property is zero-two-R. It's a nonprofit vacant land. The code should be four-oh-two for rental properties. So the county gets money. You're falling eighteen million dollars short. You're not collecting taxes. Why? And then the other property is the Alvinor property, forty-three forty-nine, South Cavalry Road. Development Services talked to her on the phone on five seventeen twenty-three, gave her a thirty-day verbal extension to get rid of the motorhomes. Haven't seen nothing done about that yet. I think what needs to be done is Development Services and Code Enforcement need an oversight. Every thirty days, they have to report to a civilian panel and see what's going on. So things get rolling, the county gets money, and, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jim Fuller, I'm going to speak on Agenda Eight, and I'm from District Two in Bullhead City. I kind of wish we weren't here attacking each other, but it's happening. I became a PC, and Mr. Asel signed my papers on, I believe it was January nineteenth, in the office there. Mr. Shaner was there, Ken Wilkens. I had a friend, Robbie Adams, was there with me that day. So it's been quite a process in two years that I've been volunteering for the Republican Party. Last fall, I put up like a hundred, two-hundred-and-sixty-eight signs all over the county, mainly in Bullhead City. So I, I love being a Republican. I really do. I immigrated here when I was ten years old from Cuba, so we lost everything to Fidel Castro, so I understand what's going on politically. On this Agenda Eight thing, on July eighth, there was a quarterly meeting here in Kingman. I understand and I know for a fact that Carrie quit as our Director on that day, so that vacancy basically started right then. Also, we had another vote for a new Director. Misty was voted in as a write-in. She was nominated by Pat Shaner that night. She was also served with some papers that were basically, a judge signed these papers. Executive Committee voted unanimously to, to stand behind our Director or our Chairman, Kimmy Kench. And so- And so they-- Basically, the vacancy was still happening on the 27th. We went to the court here on August 9th in front of Justice David Hurd. I was there three and a half hours. I was there. I listened to the three witnesses that Misty pulled up. There was Kerry Asel was the first one, second was Ashley, and I believe Nan Nicole was the third one. On Jeanne's side, Jeanne was her witness, and then Pam-- Barbara, Pape, and also Pam Ford testified for Jeanne. I didn't know what was gonna happen till the very end of this three and a half hours. I remember that towards the very end, the judge made a couple comments, kinda hinted the way he was gonna go. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking today. Wayne Hollins?
Wayne Hollins, Golden Valley. I'm not speaking on that subject. I missed a couple meetings there that had discussing about the county roads. And I ran into a situation also on a piece of property I had bought out in Golden Valley. It's on the sheet here.
Can we get the screen up again, please?
So I went down to the Roads Department there, asked them where the road is supposed to be at. So they brought me this map here that shows these nice straight green lines on-- And it's like, okay, that's fine on the piece of paper, but when you go out there and drive the road, the road is not there all along there. It's an unmaintained public road, county-- Public county road. So it crosses a couple, three washes right there that are probably over my head deep. So there's no way I'm going to be able to maintain ingress and egress out of there. And actually, after a couple rains, I could no longer get there coming in from the east because you ran into like a two-fert wall. So I had to go clear around the property. So without that being maintained, the people, for however many years, have been driving on that road, have been forced to trespass on somebody else's private property to drive close to the road there. So my question would be, how to fix that? I was told I could hire a surveyor to mark out the center line of the road, which is going to do me no good because if I can't take off an inch of dirt, and there's six feet of dirt, why do I need to know the center of the road? Plus, I don't think it's my responsibility to hire a surveyor to tell the county where their unmaintained county road is. It's the unmaintained county road. It's not an unmaintained Hollins Road. So I wanna be able to get in and out of my property without having to go 10 miles out of the way to get there. I don't need to hire a surveyor. I hired the County Road Department. That's what my taxes pay for, for them to do their job, not for me to do their job. Then we have water harvesting ponds that are in the middle of the unmaintained county roads throughout the county there. That, again, you have to drive-- People drive out and around them because they're two feet deep. And now they're driving on people's property to get around the hole. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kenny Works?
Kenny Works, Shejaca, Arizona. I wanna finish what I started last week, or last meeting. Concerning the Hopi Nation support of depriving Mojave County of its prosperity and the minerals that are available to us, or were until the Hopis came along. The status would be constantly changing as the older generation, traditionalists, died out and were replaced by younger progressives, providing a gradual transition. This is how the-- What used to be the civilized Hopi Nation became what it is now, to go around depriving people of their natural resources because they know better, you know? Progressivism's creed: No boundaries, no honor, no norm. That's what's happened to the Hopi Nation. When the dust settles after the coming-- After the coming battle, I think that hopefully there will be no more nations within a nation. Here's the bill of fare that-- In the May 2015 issue of Popular Science, here's what they prefer for bill of fare for our coming generations. More progressive creed. Installing 5,000 megawatts of wind, 9,000 megawatts of solar, and building the 5,000 miles of transmission lines to deliver the electricity produced will require 190 million acres, 140 million for wind turbines, 40 million for solar voltages, and 10 million for transmission lines. Green energy cheerleaders like the New York Times are demanding that rural Americans sacrifice their land to save the planet. A far better way to reduce carbon emissions would be nuclear power plants, building new modular nuclear plants, small-sized ones of around 50 megawatts that can be built at a factory, and installing them in near cities would provide lower-cost, reliable electricity and avoid the need to wreck the rural West with wind turbines, solar panels, and transmission lines. And remember, when they put those solar panels in there, they chemically sterilize the land. It can't be used for anything else, ever. Don't expect the New York Times ever to endorse that strategy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Pastor Lionel Grant?
Good morning. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Lionel Grant. I am the pastor at First Southern Baptist Church, Mojave Valley, 1421 East Commercial Street, Mojave Valley. My reason for being here and asking to speak before this great board is because of a situation that I endured. I support Ms. Jeanne Kentsch, and the reason is because if these two women, Misty Davini and Christina D'Malle, is being supported by Pat and Mary Lou Shaner, and also Kerry Asel, then the divisiveness and the destruction that has gone on after I left will continue. I say that with a heavy heart because at one point, I was the office manager appointed by the late Roseanne Ortiz. After she passed away, I continue on. When Mary Lou was elected, I was the-- Continued to support the party, going to various places like Golden Shores, Golden Valley, the outward areas, to be able to gain the support of those who were undecided of what party. And there, I met a great deal of success in doing so. During that time, as Mary Lou Shaner was the director of District Two, and then her husband, Pat Shaner, was also a member of the chair-- I think he was the second chair, if I'm not mistaken. The actions by Mary Lou Shaner was rather disappointing. At one point, she accused me of taking money, which was a lie. I offered to take a polygraph exam. She also made statements about me. There is a recording that she shared with another party member. At one point, we met, and what she did, she then said that I was no longer a Republican Party person. She stipulated that I was never a Republican Party person after I left California. I have documentations here that the 17 years-- Over 17 years that I was in the state of Nevada, I was indeed a Republican. I also have here papers showing that after I moved to Arizona in 2020, I did register as a Republican. Mary Lou Shaner is the one that caused a great deal of division and problem, and these two women being supported by her will continue the destruction and the problem that Ms. Jeanne Kentsch is trying to put an end to. I support Ms. Jeanne Kentsch 100%, and I pray and ask God that you do so also. Thank you, Board members.
Thank you, sir. Eva Corbett?
Good morning, Chairman and Board of Supervisors. I'm so proud to be here today to represent District Two of the Mojave County--
Eva, could I get you to state your name? I know we know who you are, but for the clerk, we're having everybody state--
Eva Corbett.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna give you some background that you may not be aware of. When Kerry Asel resigned, he was our director for about a year, I think. Not sure of the time. But I wasn't able to be in the office because my husband was dying. So I had to be home with him. So I wasn't in the office that much, but God forgive me, I was still there in spirit. And I did hear about all the chaos that was going on, but I was really unable to do anything about it. And I resent that now. Okay, he resigned on July 8th at our quarterly meeting. And then I stepped up and volunteered to be the interim or the assistant, or whatever you wanna call it, director for director for District Two. I was appointed by the board and served in that position for two and a half weeks. Now during that time, we signed up 20 new PCs and tried to reach out to the other side-- I call the other side, the disruptors-- And bring them back. I made many, many calls to these people, but they wouldn't return my calls. The reason I wanted to be there was because we were gonna have our largest fundraiser of the year, our 79th annual picnic. So we had to finish that project because that's our largest fundraiser. We were able to sign up supporters-- Volunteers to help us during that event. And also, we sold out on the lunch tickets. I personally sold nine ball caps-- Patriotic ball caps-- And nine t-shirts for the Republican Party. I'm a little shaky today, and I'm sorry about that. This is so-- It touches my heart so deeply because I want us to be united. Those people can help us, but why are they fighting with us? Now, I should also mention that during our biggest fundraiser of the year, our picnic, none of them came to the picnic. None of them. I made three patriotic baskets. Like I said, I sold t-shirts and ball caps. And got volunteers to help with the selling of tickets. We have some powerful people in our district, and I'm praying that you will support our endeavor and also support Jeanne Kentsch. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Sarah, if I totally botched your last name, I apologize. It's Leopin? Thank you. Again, if we could have everybody state your name for our clerk before you start your three minutes. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman, Board of Supervisors. My name is Sarah Lappas. I'm a concerned citizen of Bullhead City. I'm very new. I don't know any of the people that you're discussing, just the facts. And I think I represent-- I hear many people discussing how they want to attract people into this forum, and as a citizen, I will tell you, this is not an attractive situation. One of the things I love the most about our democracy is a peaceful transition of power, and I don't see that present here. I would ask that everybody involved take a look at their personal feelings on this and set them aside. I think process is most important at this time. Have the feelings you have, discuss them. I don't see respect happening. That's disappointing to me personally. I came here not intending to speak, and I feel called to do so because I think that what we're missing is unity. And one of the things I am looking for, and I haven't heard yet, is the proof, the evidence of the things that are being discussed. And it's-- Curious to me that the people that are saying that there's been these comments, emails, things that have happened, are freely making disparaging comments about each other. There's gossip. It feels very-- It feels very contrary, counterproductive to actually moving forward with a shared agenda. So I wanna state that for the record and ask that people, please, consider how off-track this has gotten and try to find ways to have conversations that will unite. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Penny Reihardt-Davis? Penny Davis? Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors, elected officials and staff. My name is Penny Davis, Bullhead City. And I'm reading this for Dr. Christine D'Malle. I wanna bring a couple of items to your attention. MCRCC Chairwoman Jeanne Kentsch has stated that the organization needs unity. How can unity be achieved when Mrs. Kentsch files baseless workplace injunctions against PCs? A workplace injunction is specific to a workplace. Something had to occur at the workplace. In these specific cases, something had to occur at the Bullhead City GOP office on Hancock Road during the dates of 710 and 71723. Christina D'Malle's injunction is baseless because she wasn't at the Bullhead City GOP office during that time period. Director Davini was only there on a Thursday afternoon for a prayer meeting that was held after the office was closed. Politics are not discussed during prayer meetings. She observed all the Director Davini's hearings as mine was supposed to follow. I watched a woman who was never seen in the inside of a courtroom do her best against a seasoned attorney, Mr. Lasota, who had 23 years of political litigation. I observed the Justice of Peace, Dave Huerta, overrule almost every one of her objections. It was a true misuse of our judicial system against a PC who has contributed so much at our local Bullhead City GOP office. I was absolutely appalled. So how many Mojave County Republicans would want to become PCs and undergo such nonsense? Furthermore, we are not the first PCs to be taken to court. I understand that PC Steve Robinson was also taken-- I understand that PC Steve Robinson was also taken to court by Mrs. Kentsch. Think of the optics, a high-powered, seasoned Phoenix attorney hired to represent the MCRCC in a Justice of the Peace Court against one of our most dedicated PCs who has no legal experience, but who was instrumental in our district in helping to raise the most fundraising money of all three districts at our America First Dinner. Finally, many of us want to know who's paying for the attorney. Is it our fundraising money going to pay this attorney, or who? I'm a staunch conservative Republican who has seen some abhorrent things lately within our Arizona party. April 11th, the Arizona State Ethics Committee produced a report on Rep. Liz Harris. The report found that Liz Harris engaged in a disorderly behavior in violation of Rule One of the Arizona House of Representatives, page eight of the report. Rule One, it's in its entirety.
Thank you for speaking this morning, ma'am. Scotty McClure?
Unreal. Boy, do I miss Royanne Ortiz. Unreal. This is worse than the Golden Valley Water situation. I'm asking you to poll number seven also and eight. How can you appoint somebody when we don't have a PC down there anyway? The damn door's been locked for three weeks. And I'm asking twenty-one and twenty-seven be polled also. I think you're gonna poll that one anyway, Ron. Anyway, I'm not here unless I can speak when you poll these, because I did sign up. This thing has come to my thing here about the Voter Registration Act. We've been contacted by lawyers, you guys have, and apparently, we're gonna get sued like crap if we don't fix this for the night. This is the Recorder's Office. Apparently, according to the census, we have a voter registration in Apache County that's How in the heck can we have over 100% in that county? La Paz, 100.5, 100.1 in La Jolla, Santa Cruz, 112%. In this county, we have 95.2%. Of all people over eighteen are registered to vote. That's bull. This needs to be fixed. The Recorder's Office, I don't know what the heck. You just approved on 717, $16,000 to join another thing down there. The Secretary of State's Office to authorize Mojave's County portion of the maintenance contract of the statewide voter registration database. How can we, we can't count on the prison over there, too? How about the people that are in the county jail? After ninety days, they should be off the voter rolls. If you sell a property and you move, you have to change address, you have to re-register. There's no way that this Recorder's Office has done their job at all to get these people off the voter vote. I'm not talking about dead people. We've heard all those mortuary people here that day missing bodies, but they count because they're registered voters. How in the heck have we got 95% of all people over eighteen, all people in this county? Ain't no way this Recorder's Office has this all screwed up. This is from the Census Bureau, and Holtzman, Bogel, Barn, Toskosky, and I can't pronounce these names, but we've got just, what, ninety days to even think about bringing this on the agenda? We need accurate voter rolls because they violate federal law because we don't have accurate voter rolls. No way do we have that in this county.
Thank you, sir. Brett Forrester?
Brett Forrester, Golden Valley. Today, our water and food, air are all being attacked in some way, be it for control or some other nefarious reason, including personal gain. I understand that because of the present governing body, and are beyond important that our information, both past, present, as well as in the future, be very transparent and forthcoming of the threats to the safety and security of those that live here and the businesses that produce, supply, and give back to this community. We here today have an agenda that represents, to the best of our ability, those subjects that reflect this very thing. I'm speaking on Agenda 45 to concern the election of a new governing body. That body will be made up of management, support, and interaction of those agencies in the Mojave County, as well as the federal statutes and guidelines that need to be very clear. The Board of a new GVID governing body will be made up of, at or at a minimum, made up of locals that live in the area, that are active and knowledgeable of specific issues to the valley. Given the past understandings of what has taken place, most recently in raising of the water bills, moving of funds, non-clarity of use of these funds, and the lack of information presented to the general public, it is beyond obvious as to the need to find a better representation of the needs and deeds for and by the people here in Golden Valley. I'd like to submit to the council the very important need to start and commit to this process, whatever that may be. Money cannot be the only motivating factor, though important does not rule in proper and competent decisions. The will and the security of the people's vital drinking water and irrigation water Without water, you have nothing here. We are in the desert. The fact remains in the forefront of all to be talked about and decisions to be made with this in mind. No one person has the answers. Influence comes from many theaters, including but not limited to the most basic of these needs. I know for a fact that there are bodies, not to be mentioned here at this meeting, that will be putting back into the community based on this very thing. Hundreds of millions of dollars will be invested, and I know that that's a staggering sum, but it is not without a large amount of needed oversight and to how and what that impact will be on the community here in the valley, as well as surrounding bodies and to the nation itself. That is why it is not an understatement to realize exactly why we are here today. Before that investment is tapped and/or reinvestment into the community is made, the misuse and/or abuse after the fact is simply unacceptable. There must be a roadmap.
Thank you, sir, for speaking today. I appreciate it.
Very well, thank you.
Dennis DeVine?
I'm the husband of Misty DeVine, and I'm here to show you what a veteran looks like after twenty-plus years in the airborne infantry. That's why I limp up here. I have served in three continents, commanded on three different continents, served everywhere. I am deeply disturbed by the attacks on my wife. She only joined the party in March. She went there to work for one day a week. I saw her again in April. She worked anywhere from twenty to eighty hours a week to get the dinner done. She would volunteer for anything that was going on. She participated in everything she could to make the party more successful. She arranged for a guest speaker, ran her own voter registration guide. She spent an entire weekend registering people for the paper ballots, and which I would like to point out, my biggest concern here is, U.S. Constitution was built on disagreement. Compromise, working together, we're allowed to disagree. Just because this body here voted three to two not to have paper ballots doesn't mean you turn on each other and make the other person not an American or unwanted because they had a different point of view. You have a budget to consider and all sorts of considerations, so you place your vote appropriately. First Amendment is crucial in a building, on the street, in the Republican Party. Without it, we have nothing. We've already seen that in our media, and I'm sincerely hoping that this august body will understand that it's okay for us to disagree with people at county, Republicans or state or whatever, and voice our legitimate concerns all the time, everywhere. I'm no longer in the Army, but I did work with General Swartkopf, and we're not under the Army rules. We're under the U.S. Constitution, and everybody deserves the right to be heard. Even if you don't like what I have to say, you can counter it, and we can agree to disagree and continue with whatever we need to do. I apologize for taking the Board's time today. I know you guys are working hard, even though I don't always agree with everything that happens. That's life. And God bless you, and God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Christina Demal?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, elected officials and staff. I am Dr. Christina Demal. First off, I want to apologize to the Chairman. I've been spelling your name wrong. My apologies in the emails. Okay. Today, I'd like to address a complaint filed against me by Jeanne Kentsch. She refers to ARS 38.291. Section seven of that says, "A person holding the office ceasing to discharge the duties of the office for a period of three consecutive months." I was appointed PC on 1/3/2023. I've attended every monthly meeting through June, every weekly American First planning meeting, and worked every Friday except one from 1:00 to 4:00 until July 7th. I've also attended two quarterly meetings, only missing the one that was originally set to be held on April 8th, but was rescheduled to April 1st, and we'd already had the air show planned, and we had a booth there for the Bullhead City GOP. Interestingly, Ms. Barbara Houston, Bullhead City Mayor, D'Amico's wife, has only attended one meeting, and she did not even help with the American First Dinner, yet she wanted to run for the District Two Director. As Ms. Kentsch filed a complaint against her, Section Eight of this ARS 38291, conviction of a person holding the office of a felony or an offense involving a violation of the person's official duties. I have never been convicted of a felony. I have never violated my official duties while I've been in the Bullhead City office. Let me add here that there's been one PC, which has only been described today, who came in twice into the office. Now, I wasn't in either one, but I did see the video. I did have PCs call me at home, and he came in, he objected to Scott Pressler's lifestyle. This is a federally protected class of people. You don't do things like this. Information was sent to Ms. Kentsch, nothing was done. This is serious. It is very serious, and we need to deal with that. Second, Mrs. Kentsch states that the MCRCC Executive Committee feels that the duly-elected District Two Director, Misty DeVine, and me have unbecoming conduct and moral perpetuity to be harmful. I had to reread that several times, and then I chuckled. What must the Executive Committee think of their chairwoman living with her boyfriend who shoots at minors? And according to a September 16th, 2019 Havasu News article, Ms. Kentsch accused a fellow Republican, Sheriff Schuster, of retaliation after her boyfriend was charged with three felonies. So there's some interesting things going on here. Finally, she lists ARS 16822, Section E, discusses PC assisting with voter registration and on election days. At our June 14th meeting, I brought up the suggestion about upcutting gun show and having voter registration there. Misty DeVine took care of it.
Thank you for speaking this morning. Stephen Lee?
Before you start, my time, can I clarify, has the procedure changed? Are we doing call to the public, and are there still the issues coming up? Or is it just one thing, and it's now? As far as addressing the Board?
Chairman, I'm Felter. Actually, the call to the public is meant to be called to public for things not on the agenda and also for things on consent. So in your three minutes, you can speak on anything not on the agenda or on consent.
Okay. Thank you very much, Stephen Lee, Bullhead City. This Thursday through Saturday, there is the Anti-Davos Event. I hope people on both sides will attend it. I have ten tickets left. I believe it's probably sold out. If anyone wants to contact me, I have ten tickets left available. General Flynn will be there, Eric Trump will be there, Mike Lindell will be there. He'll be talking about his plan to save America. I really do hope we can come together, but I really do think one side in this situation is not on the right side. And that is because there's a reason why we have our Constitution. It's our founding document. It's supposed to guide the way we handle things politically. And there's a reason why the First Amendment is the First Amendment, the Second Amendment is the Second Amendment. And we have, especially from the Democrats, but a lot of Republicans, too, are trying to take away those rights. And I feel that that's what's going on here. I feel that that's what's gone on on the state level, and then it's trying to be censored here. We've got enough censorship now. If you want freedom, you have to be willing to defend dissent. And I know I'm speaking to a lot of people who are angry at me right now on the other side and don't want me to speak this. They don't want Misty to speak. They don't want these other people to speak. But that is our God-given right. That is our right guaranteed under the Constitution of the United States, to be able to speak, to not be censored, to be able to be heard. We've got our media taken away. We have no local ownership in newspapers. We have a big tech internet that is acknowledged to have censored. And when you see this going on on the other side, I don't know how you can tolerate doing it within your own party. There's a reason I'm not a member of the party, and it's exactly this reason. If this got resolved, I'd be happy to become a member of the Republican Party. But in a one-party town, there has to be discussion allowed. There has to be freedom of speech. You can't say that someone can't speak, and I think that is what is at the core of this. And there have been cover-ups attempted in this issue. I'm not trying to address the state issue now, but Liz Harris is at the core of what these people are fighting about, whether they're willing to admit that or not. And I think everything else is just cannon fodder. And it's really important that if you want freedom, you have to defend dissent. And on that, I thank you very much for your time, and I really hope that especially people on this side of the room will consider what I'm saying and that we can save America, because we have so many other things, like the gentleman with the food. I bring that up at the city council meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Barbara Houston?
I am Barbara Houston. I am the mayor's wife. It's pretty obvious that we are passionate, and it's pretty obvious that we're divided, as you can see by the two sides of the room, as well as the vice chair for the MCRCC isn't even sitting with her own committee. I support Agenda Item Number Eight, the creation of two PC vacancies, and I firmly believe there is ample evidence to support this decision. The workplace injunction was upheld by Justice of the Peace, David Huerta, after careful consideration of all the evidence. Three and a half hours. He gave Misty plenty of time. He gave Misty plenty of time, and it was his conclusion that the injunction stay. This is a clear indication that action is needed to rectify the issues within District Two. However, what's even more concerning is the division that's plagued our district. I have been an elected PC for over 10 years. I was on with Royanne and Bill Hurd, and then we had some directors that made it very uncomfortable for me to go into the office. Combine that with family losses I had, raising a teenage son who's now 19, a Republican, and a new PC, and COVID, I just avoided the office. That's true. However, during Royanne and Bill Hurd, I worked on several Lincoln Day dinners, several picnics. I've continued to sign up Republicans and registered people to vote, even though I have avoided the office. I've personally experienced fallout from this division with attacks purely meant to discredit and humiliate me. All of us have known many of these people for many decades. They've worked hard. These people are relatively new. Some of them I don't even know. A PC should never feel unwelcome in their own district office. We had Pastor Lionel Grant come up here, and this is something that really upsets me. And I would like to speak on Jim Fuller on the video that was shown. It looked to me like he was attacked by that woman, and Lionel was also attacked in the office. It's alleged he was called the N-word in our district office. Now, are we going to allow that to happen? Jim Fuller and I disagree on Scott Pressler, but I never jumped up and got into his face. We talked about it. I tried to figure out where he was coming from. That is what we need. We need unity. So, yes, I decided to run for District Two office, and I was the only person on the ballot. And when I sent out my flyers via email, I was attacked, discredited. My reputation was in question, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you for speaking. Nan Nicole. Nan Nicole? Oh, great.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors, elected officials, and the audience. I'm here today actually just to say a couple of words. There's been a lot of what I was going to say has already been said, so I'm not going to waste your time. But I just really want to say I'm very disappointed that we are trying to dismiss two -- you are, yeah, I'm not -- two precinct committeemen that I've worked with and that work hard. And when we had our election, we had over two-thirds of the people casting their vote, whether by proxy or they were there, that wanted Misty. So, it seems to me like we're the majority. So, thank you very much. I hope that you come to the right decision and use the law and not hyperbole to make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Pape.
My name is Barbara Pape, and let me tell you, these people are intimidating on our older members. As I was getting my papers to get to talk, I was intimidated. I was told, and she made me feel threatened and unsafe. She has done this several times. There are four or five of them that have done this to our members. I've been here, I've been a member since 2010. I have been in several committees. I have accomplished a lot, and I enjoy taking care of my country, my county, and my state, and my city. I have nothing else to say to you. These people have been creating chaos and division. We really had, under the Director of Hildy Angus, in 2010, we did accomplish a lot. We had 125, I think, members that we came into our particular membership. I don't see anything but chaos, and for two and a half years since the Shaner has been in, for two and a half years, we've had nothing but chaos and division. And I'm fighting very, very hard to keep us together and to keep our accomplishments. This next year, 2024, is very important. And I don't know what else to tell you. Please, these people are not positive for our members, and we need to go on with the next venue of success and accomplishment. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jeff Esposito.
Well, this is a different subject. How about that? All right. Kudos to Supervisor Angus for caring about her constituents enough to spend some of their money.
Excuse me, just state your name for the record.
Oh, Jeff Esposito.
Thank you.
All right. Kudos to Supervisor Angus for caring about her constituents enough to spend some of their money to bring them some enjoyment at Rotary Park. There are two parks in District Four that do not look like parks. They are forsaken pieces of desert with a few additions of equipment, many in need of repair or replacement. These parks are Neo Butler Park and Veterans Park in Golden Valley. Both parks are embarrassing. The ARPA funds are not yours, Welma. You seem to think so when you abruptly closed down a meeting by rescinding your offer of funds to the Golden Valley Improvement District for a much-needed well, as if it is your money. That money is ours and should be spent to make our lives healthier and better. You need to do something right for a change. Oh, and I second the idea of ousting Sam Elters, and let's go, Brandon.
Stephen Robinson.
I'm Stephen Robinson from Golden Valley. Wow, Supervisors, staff, I've seen this movie before. But before I get into that, on number seven, the bylaws for the party require the signature or the approval or recommendation of a PC to someone to become a PC. And if I understand right, Ms. Davini is the District One Director, and my question is, did she approve those two or those three people? Now, I like Lionel Grant a lot. He's a nice guy. He's a wonderful man. So is Steve D'Amico. He's another friend. I have friends on both sides of the issue. But if we're going to make people follow the laws, and if you're going to try to follow the laws, then on that issue, you need to make sure that they were supported or that they were signed off by the current district director unless they applied before she took office. And if that's fine, that's fine. On number eight, when Ms. Kentsch read it, she left out the first clause of 38.291, "conviction of a person for a felony or for an offense," conviction for a felony or an offense that violates their duties of office. Ms. Davini nor Ms. Duval have been convicted of an offense. That's a misdemeanor or a petty crime. They have not been convicted, so it would be a violation of their civil rights if you voted to remove them from office, and I think it would be an illegal move. Three years ago, I was working for President Trump, happily so. I was also District One Director. We had the best performance in that year, 2020, and both in 2019 and 2020. Our office, and remember, 2020 was a COVID year, so we weren't going to events. We raised over $53,000. Our net profit was over $26,000, more than Districts Two and Three combined. In addition, we registered more voters. We had more people knocking on doors and making phone calls for President Trump. We had fantastic unity of those that were working in the office. Unfortunately, there were several that quit and wouldn't work with us because they didn't like that I didn't do everything they told me to do, like do the accounting for the office. And I was accused several times of theft of monies or being deceitful, and I never was. My problem isn't lying, it's telling the truth too much. Then, in October of that year, the deciding vote for fining people $10,000, businesses $10,000 for not wearing masks, the final vote, the deciding vote, was by Jean Bishop. And then, just a few days later, she sent people out from the Health Department to Great American Pizza to go after them because they didn't support her. Mr. Hall, owner of Great American Pizza, then started the recall on her, but Jean, Ms. Angus ordered me to be fired from a job because I didn't do it. She took my name off the list of elected state committeemen. She violated my civil rights when she did that, and maybe I should be suing her if it was still possible. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking today. Mary Lou Shaner. Patrick Shaner, you're on deck.
Chairman and Board of Directors, elected officers, and staff. My name is Mary Lou Shaner.
Thank you.
I'm District, I was District Director of District Two. I was until Carrie Azel took over. Before me was Royanne Ortiz, and now we have Misty Davini as our district director. So far in this room, we have six different district directors present, and I can guarantee you that everyone has something horrible to say about Jeanne Kentsch. We've all been under her rule, all of us. It has been rough. We tell her things that have happened in our office. She refuses to help us. I had to quit. I couldn't take anymore. She told two different district directors that I was embarrassment because I had called -- what was his name? He's our, I had called Alan Tempered. It wasn't me who called. It was one of my direct, what are my people, my PCs who called. It wasn't even me, but she failed to ask me if I had called. It wasn't me. And so, she tells people that I've done evil. I didn't do evil. She's done the same thing with Carrie. She's done, she's doing the same thing with Misty. It is, the problem is with Jeanne Kentsch, and she's right there. And I guarantee you a dime to a dollar that the six directors would say the same thing. And you know what? The other people that got up here to speak, they weren't telling the truth. Granted, granted, Steve, you came into the office one or two times. He didn't come into the office because he wasn't unwelcome. I told him he was welcome to come to the office. He just didn't have time. That's not my problem. I was there, and his wife never came into the office the whole time I was there. She was thrown out of the office by Royanne Ortiz. Thrown out. Along, that's not true, along with Barbara Pape.
Order, please.
She was thrown out too. There's a problem here in this office, and the problem is Jeanne Kentsch gets her little people together, her little groups, and tries to throw us off track. There's two-thirds of us here that want to go the right way, and then there's the one-third or the quarter or whatever that don't. So, Jeanne has to do some filing and embarrass our party in front of the whole country, Jeanne. She, who wouldn't let Ken file against Barbara Pape, who was harassing him. She wouldn't let him do it. It's an embarrassment, and she's the embarrassment. She is doing this to us, and I don't know why. I can't figure it out. And I never, ever called Lionel the N-word. He said he thought. That's a lie. He said he thought. I have the email. He thought.
Order, let's just address the bias, please.
This is really a problem, but it all comes from Jeanne Kentsch.
Thank you for speaking today. Patrick Shaner. If you could state your name for the record?
Yes, I'm Pat Shaner, and I live in Bullhead City. Primarily, I am here to read you something from somebody who cannot be here because she is included in the orders of against harassment. So, she says she can't even come to this building, so I'm going to read this for her. By the way, I'm against Agenda Eight. Hello, Board Members. This is her. I'm elected PC in Mojave County. I cannot attend this meeting because Jeanne Kentsch is attacking the U.S. Constitution and our First Amendment rights using the judicial system by filing fraudulent injunctions against three of us PCs. I'm ordered to stay away from this address. Jeanne Kentsch has started a war against Republicans in Mojave County. For years, Jeanne Kentsch escorted the efforts of American citizens to voice their opinions on political matters that involve Americans in our country. As was pointed out by Sheriff Schuster during his last campaign, Jeanne Kentsch has used her position as county assessor to try and influence the legal outcome of her boyfriend's felony charges, and now she's using her chairwoman position and the judicial system to silence freedom-loving Americans. Jeanne Kentsch filed three workplace harassments illegally. Not one of the three of us were in any workplace whatsoever. Ms. Kentsch has used the GOP for her own personal vendettas. Jeanne Kentsch documented on an official motion to the court that she is an agent of the GOP. However, during a heated email debate where Billhead City, Steve D'Amico's wife Barbara Houston violated standing orders by sending out a mass mail, Bullhead City Manager Toby Cotter and Jeff Tipton were included in that email. I don't know why. As far as I know, Toby Cotter and Jeff Tipton are not precinct committeemen or members of the GOP. Therefore, Jeanne claimed to represent the GOP should have included that she also represents Toby Cotter. I and others are appalled at the corruption of our Constitution at the hands of Jeanne Kentsch and Hildy as part of their desperate attempts to censor the public. Ms. Kentsch has personal vendettas against people who would speak out against her tyrannical behavior, and it's obvious she's using retaliatory tactics and allowing others to attack our district manager because we're fighting against her corruption of this party. Jeanne Kentsch needs to step down immediately and let an honorable, freedom-loving -- my email went away. Personally, that's pretty much what I had to say. My words now. I am definitely against this item on Agenda Eight because I don't think she has any legal grounds to do it. Others have come up and pointed that out and listed the statute affected. So, I'm asking all of you to consider the following. Of all the times in our history that we've had somebody to censor people, make them shut up, they've never been the good guys, people.
Thank you for speaking today. Appreciate it. Becky Foster.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, Mr. Elters, and Mr. Esplin. My name is Becky Foster, for the record, and I'm here to speak, well, I'm an elected precinct committeeman, and I'm a state committeeman, and I'm here to speak basically on the United States Constitution, this First Amendment, freedom of speech. I'm a conservative Republican, and I highly I'm a conservative Republican, and I highly value my right to free speech, as we all should. Jamie Morgane, my Democrat counterpart, I think she expresses quite well and was very succinct, so I won't go over some of the other issues that I was going to bring forth. As the Board of Supervisors, you don't need to be embroiled in party politics in a public forum. Neither does it have to be, and should it be, in the court system. It should be handled internally by the Republican Party. And it's a shame that it comes to this. I was District One Director in Kingman. And I too was nominated from the floor, and I won that position. And the moment I won it, you would have think the world had come to an end. There's a lot of crying, gnashing of teeth, so to speak. People were very upset because I was not the preferred candidate for that position. And from that time forward, until I resigned earlier because I just couldn't take it anymore, I was harassed, undermined by PCs in the office, certain factions. And it came to a recall meeting, which I won ultimately. Supervisor Gould was there. He probably remembers it. And anybody who would like to see it, it was also videotaped, so the facts can't be changed. What was said was said, and it is what it is. And through my, so after I won the recall, I decided to resign on my own terms. And I did that. It was after a very successful Lincoln Day dinner, mostly through my efforts. And no good deed goes unpunished in the Republican Party. Behind me in the videotape, speaking of unbecoming conduct, I'd like to finish this, and I only got 11 seconds. The Secretary and the Chairman I saw in the video after I went home and looked at it were laughing their butts off while I was trying to defend myself. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes the call to the public.
Chairman Lincoln Feltzer. If I may, my name was mentioned, so I'd like to respond. I've been a Republican my whole life. This is the first time in my entire life I've been embarrassed to be a Republican. I couldn't have even imagined this happening today. We should all be ashamed of ourselves. It felt like kindergarten here. If we can't get along, how do you expect to do anything better in 2024? This was shameful. And I'm going to throw it back. If this is, and it should have been addressed within the party at any time, there could be a vote of no confidence. But you didn't. So now it's in our corner, and that's what we have to decide today. But I'm telling you, 2024 does not look good in Mojave County based on this. I'm ashamed and embarrassed, and everybody here as a Republican should feel the same way.
We have one presentation this morning. Presentation, sorry, Supervisor Bishop.
My name was also mentioned by Mr. Stephen Robinson. He's been absent from Mojave County for almost a year. And as soon as he comes back, he brings up old history and old lies. And I challenge him to bring any proof of the accusations that he levied this morning about things that occurred during the COVID period. Thank you.
All right. Now we have a presentation by Chairman James Carlson with the Boundary Line Foundation summarizing the BLF report titled Survey of the History, Background, and Compliance of the BLM Conservation and Health Rule with Public Land Laws of the United States. Mr. Carlson, welcome.
Thank you.
Once you get to the podium, if you would just state your name, and then you may proceed with your presentation.
Mr. Chairman, before I begin my brief remarks, it was my understanding I prepared for 10 minutes, and allotted the 10-minute timeframe.
Sure.
Yes, okay, thank you. Thank you so, thank you so much. Thank you so much for that. That'll, that'll guide my remarks. The the thank you for, thank you for the Board of Supervisors for doing what you're doing today. It's, 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 it was unexpected for me to walk in and see this, and this is America at work. So thank you for your hard work. Thank you for your candid opinion and your work as local government. So I'll start my remarks today with the Tenth Amendment of the Constitution. And I'm going to put that in context of what Boundary Line Foundation does and what we do. And then I'm going to address some, two comments, but from the, from the audience or from the citizens on the Federal Land Policy Management Act. So, but the Tenth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution says the powers that not delegated to the United States by the Constitution nor prohibited by it to the states are reserved to the states respectively or to the people. And Boundary Line Foundation takes the position that to the people are county government. So the Tenth Amendment occurs in the, in the context of government. And so this, this, this local body right here, Mojave, is, is expressing and living out the Tenth Amendment, reservations principle. Now, the reason I say that is because the, the federal government is limited and through the enumerated powers. And so that's the context of my remarks. I'm Jim Carlson. I'm the chairman of the Boundary Line Foundation. And Boundary Line Foundation, what we do is we train and equip and serve local governments while they apply their Tenth Amendment powers to federal agency actions. Now, that's a mouthful. But basically what we do is we come alongside county governments. We're not the, we don't, we're not the, we don't, we don't try and preempt. We're not the smartest guy in the room. We come along, we serve counties as, as federal agencies come along. And under Administrative Procedures Act and, and and for federal actions at the local level. So that's kind of the summary. And what we do here, this slide one, there's only four slides, is applied federalism. And so what, what does that look like? Boundary Line Foundation, well, before I say, before I get on to that, we've been doing this for, I've been doing this, and our team has been doing this for about 12 years. We changed and affected decision-making in about 30, in about 35 decisions in federal agencies. So that's land use plans, forest management plans, endangered species, all kinds of things like that on behalf of county governments. So applied federalism, and so we've been, I've been doing that for 10 years. And then we started the foundation about two years ago because the for-profit model wasn't working. So that's, that's how, that's, that's the background. What we do here is applied federalism. BLF supports counties and coalitions, county coalitions, as they apply your Tenth Amendment and state delegated governmental authorities. That means we understand them. And many county commissioners are working, men and women, just like yourselves. And, and so they don't have time to necessarily do the deep research into the federal agencies and into the federal organizations and the apparatus. And so what we do is we help build the administrative record. So when a federal agency comes out, let's pick U.S. Forest Service as an example. When they come out and have changes on a forest management plan, or BLM has a changes on a Bureau of Land Management Resource Management Plan, we help build the administrative record during the, as part of the Administrative Procedures Act. So everyone knows that it is the public comment period. Once the public comment period starts, then that's the window with which you, you have the opportunity to place in the federal record all the details, the local details and the statutes and the language that can help guide the agency or even put the agency on track, but also prepare the record for litigation. So we help apply the Federal Administrative Procedures Act. Our work products are excellent. They're, they're well researched and they, they, they have hyperlinks and they go back and they're well sourced. And, and so I'm going to use the example of the BLM Conservation and Landscape Health Rule today because right now that rule is out for decision-making in the agency. The agency is making a decision on that rule. So another thing we do is we, after, as the rule-making process is going, we help counties through strategic dissemination of audits and policy analysis and legitimacy reports that place into the public record the statutes, the congressional mandates that the agency has to go by. And we actually, we actually quote, we cite prolifically from it. And our work product, by the way, is available for public consumption. And, and we encourage everyone to read that. I have hard copies for the board that I can drop off at your offices. We also provide education, support, and strategy for county-to-agency advocacy. That would not, I've started five county associations. I'll just show those briefly, but they're very similar to your quad-state local government, government authority that, that is in five states or four states and that operates under joint powers agreement. That is an excellent model, an absolutely excellent model. We've actually perfected that in several states and then, and as Boundary Line Foundation and me personally. So we know how to start organizations, organize them, and help county commissioners who, who make the decisions run their organizations. So, and then we also, so that's one and two, applied federalism and collective networking. Here's the, here's a map of the United States. The, the BLM Conservation Landscape and Health Rule, one of the signatures to it is the Coalition of Arizona and New Mexico Counties. Those are in green. Those are affiliates. So those are coalitions that we, that have been existing, in existence a long time. So we've come alongside them, we encourage them, and we, we help equip Howard Hutchison and his group with what, in the context of how they serve their constituents. So it's important for me to say that. The red is in Montana. Those are, the red is in Montana. And those are all counties. Right now, Montana has 17 counties that we started. Montana Natural Resource Coalition, those commissioners own, they run, and they make all the decisions for the coalition. And then in Kansas, there's 31 County Coalition. That, that's Kansas Natural Resource Coalition. I started that in 2013 during the Lesser Prairie Chicken Threatened Species Listing. And by the way, I took a model from a lawsuit that, that Mojave County was doing against Secretary Salazar, so on your public hearings. So we also, we're very sophisticated in what we do. We understand, we understand the implications of it, but we organize county, or we organize public hearings. So I'm sorry, in a hurry, I'm going to take a deep breath and slow down. The orange represents affiliations where we've had successes. In northern Minnesota, you might know that, the largest copper-nickel mineral withdrawal in the nation, or in the world, the Duluth Complex. BLM and Forest Service went together during the Obama administration, and they were very slipshod with what they did. We came alongside and informed those county commissioners and helped them, equipped them with quality work products. We went to DC, trained them on, on, on a number of things procedurally. And we engaged the White House and BLM and Forest Service. And the Trump administration came back and rolled that back. And you'll see the orange there, also in Utah. That's, that's Sanlon County. We were operative there in Sanlon County at the beginning. That was, that would have been the Bears Ears Withdrawal. There's been three rounds of that, as everyone is probably more familiar than I, under the Antiquities Act. And it was our work that, that was used to inform the decision-making, both by the Obama administration and the Trump administration on those withdrawals. That was our work. Here, we have the basic rule-making process. I won't take you through that. It's in your packets. But this, this is how we engage in the process during the federal rule-making process. Now, what's important about this is this is our tactical approach. Whenever the agencies make a rule, they have to, they go through the Office of Information Regulatory Affairs and, and then at the beginning of the notice of, of public rule-making process. And there's a way to discover and monitor that before the rules actually come out. And so we monitor that. We get ahead of that at the beginning of the process. We know what's coming down the, down the pipe before they even come out through the Federal Register. We monitor the trade paths. We're extremely sophisticated with what we do. And we're very, very careful to stay with the facts. And we apply the statutes, the congressional mandates to the agencies themselves. That's the take-home mandate. And we cite from them prolifically. We even cite some case law and such like that. Sometimes we, sometimes we quote regulation and such like that in policy manuals, but not, not always. And then there's tactical dissemination. So with that, I go to the BLM Conservation Landscape Health Rule. And I want to touch on a couple of points here that this is important on this rule. This, this rule has international implications that Mojave County is, has having two, two thirds, as I, as you know, two thirds of your land area in the county boundaries is managed by federal agencies. The BLF, full two thirds or at least a bunch, let's see. And so at least 5.7 million acres of federal land, 66% of the county. The BLM Conservation and Landscape Health Rule will affect public lands policy indefinitely. We've, our report is called, it's called the, our report that I have copies of here, and I have hard copies for the board too, demonstrates how the landscape-level conservation leasing system that is being promoted under the BLM Conservation and Landscape Health Rule is not contemplated by any of the public land laws of the United States. It's not there. So the conservation leasing system was not there in the public land laws at all. And we analyzed eight, eight statutes going back to 1920. And that's all in the report. It's all documentable, and it either is or isn't, right? Things are either black or white. If we say something, it either is or it isn't. It implements, the Conservation Landscape Health Rule implements a top-down regulatory framework that will convert the six principal uses under the Federal Land Policy Management Act to a single principal use for conservation only. It reverses, the CLH Rule reverses the statutory language of the Federal Land Policy Management Act that gives county governments equal standing in public land use planning processes. That's Flippman Title II. This county has equal standing in the land use planning processes in lands, in BLM processes, equal standing to engage in public processes. The clear rule would reverse that and negate it. And that's in our report there too. We also share with you what to do about it. The clear rule reverses the statutory language of Flippman, gives county governments, oh, we talked about that. This is really, really, really important. I'm going to say that twice. The clear rule resurrects the Bureau of Land Management, BLM Planning 2.0 Rule. You might remember the Planning 2.0 Rule that upset all of us across the West, that the Congress came in under the Trump administration. It was the first thing that Congress did is under the Congressional Review Act, they rejected that rule. The clear rule resurrects Planning 2.0. It resurrects it. And it puts it on stairways. Okay? Now, what's important about that from a legal standpoint, or is that, that under CRA, that's a procedural, that's a procedural statute, that you cannot, the federal government cannot resurrect a rule that is materially the same in the regulatory process. So, so the Conservation Landscape and Health Rule can't even see the light of day according to the Administrative Procedures Act. Couple more things, and then I'll yield the podium, Mr. Chairman. The, the, our report documents that the, how the Biden administration, under the CLHR Rule, is implementing what's called a natural asset capitalization agenda. Now, you can't make this stuff up. Is, it implements a national asset capitalization agenda. We trace, our report traces clear rule through the Paris Peace Accord into Executive Order 14008 that enables international trading of the mineral, timber, oil, and gas and capital assets of the 245 million acres. assets of the 245 million acres of public lands managed by the United States. In other words, there's a, there's a, there's an existing leasing system for the minerals and oil and gas, SS and Taylor Grazing Acts leases in the northern part of the county. And the clear rule would, would change all of that. And it would allow those natural assets to be traded on an international market. Two more points. Now, if you do have insomnia, you can, you can read the report twice and it'll put you to sleep. First time might upset you, but the, the, this is really important too. The, they're during Planning 2.0 in 2016, the Congress put into place what's called the BLM Foundation, that in, 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 in administrative statute. That function, that BLM function now, the clear rule would now usher in a public, private natural trading system and it would, would replace, oh, I already said that, it replaced the mineral government timber system, but under the, okay, I lost my train of thought. And so I'll go, yeah, sorry about that. It's highly technical and somewhat emotional, but, but here, here's the point is that the, the, the BLM Foundation now is, is a nonprofit natural asset trade exchange hub whose board of directors include Tracy Stone Manning, ex-governor Steve Bullock of Montana, Neil Cornsey and other activists. So now what's going to happen is this nonprofit under the natural, this nonprofit under the BLM Management Foundation will be the trading hub, hub of the natural asset capitalization agenda. Now either what I'm saying, that's huge. That's huge. Now what I'm saying is there's, and I'll, I'll close with this, Mr. Chairman, thank you for so much time. But what I'm saying is, is what I'm sharing is either true or it's not. It's either accurate or it's incorrect. So I have a hard copy for each one of the board members and you can raise your hand and I'll drop it off at your office if you wish for that. There are other things too, like we demonstrate that the BLM is in the role of not conserving wildlife, but their, their purpose in life over wildlife is to manage wildlife for productivity, just as the Federal Land Management Act calls for. So with that, I'll stand for any questions. I'll yield the podium. It wasn't eloquent, but there was a lot I wanted to transfer.
Thank you for your presentation today, Mr. Carlson. Any questions from our board? Supervisor Johnson?
No questions, thank you.
Supervisor Bishop?
I have no questions, but I did want to thank you for coming and presenting this morning to the board. We appreciate it.
Right. And I'd be willing to come back for a longer presentation if I had an invitation.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So sir, you're saying that the Paris Peace Accords is somehow tied up with US land management policies?
The Bureau of Land Management Conservation and Landscape Health Rule upends the Federal Land Policy Management Act. It, it essentially reverses it and negates it through regulation and ushers in the trading system of a natural asset trading system that is contemplated through the Paris Peace Accord and Executive 14008. Now, if you're familiar with that one, it's, that's the decarbonization agenda of the Trump administration, 3030 is built into that and America of the Beautiful and all those other kinds of things. So to answer your question, Supervisor Gould, is the clear rule would, would implement administratively in the public lands of the United States through regulation, the Paris Peace Accord and Executive Order 14008?
And that's the same Paris Peace Accord that President Trump pulled us out of?
Correct. And it hasn't been, it hasn't been approved by the--
It's never been ratified by Congress.
Never been ratified by the Senate. And, and that's the other thing about our report too, is that we, there's another piece to this and I'm getting in another piece without being asked, but the Taylor Grazing Act, we, we provide in our report what to do about it. What to do about it for, on local government.
So the Biden administration is implementing a treaty, a foreign treaty that was never ratified by, by Congress or by the Senate. So they're end running the Constitution to do this?
Not only are they, are they end running the Constitution, they're reversing the congressional mandates under the Federal Land Policy Management Act of 1976 and probably eight other acts of law going back to the Federal Power Act of 1920.
So they didn't go back and change what was voted on by Congress? They're just ignoring it apparently and doing an end run around that whole process?
In my mind, it's more than ignoring. In my mind, it's, 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 it's actually, it's institutionalizing through the regulation, the, the 14008. So they're, they're actually putting in place this whole system, bypassing the Congress entirely and the public lands of the laws of the United States.
Thank you, sir.
Supervisor Angus, any comments?
No. Sir, thank you for your presentation today. My district is District One. If you were to put a line basically right down the middle of Mojave County, I'm everything to the east and all the way up to Washington and King County, Utah. Every administration, you're always playing a certain amount of defense against these administrators over in Washington DC. It's unprecedented right now, whether it's somebody, one guy taking a pin and sticking it in a map with the Antiquities Act and saying, this huge swath of land is now a national monument, not based on science. Or it's these conservation easements, which Mojave County, thankfully, we are on record on, against these. We've actually adopted a letter opposing what you just talked about this morning. Our rural way of life is being assaulted right now. And, and it's, it's the very reason that this board is refreshing and bringing back the Mojave County Public Lands Commission. We hope that that commission and our appointees are going to be able to work with organizations such as yourself to organize and really fight back against all this stuff. These conservation easements are absolutely against the mandate that these public lands be used for multiple use. They want to kick everybody else off of the land, our ranchers, everybody else in support of their extreme environmental goals, which are just not logical. So I appreciate your, your support today.
Mr. Chairman, is that a question?
No, I was just making a statement. I said, thanks, and hopefully we'll be able to, we do have a public lands commission that we're going to be appointing folks to. It would be my hope that your organization would be able to work with this board and our new commissioners in fighting these things.
May I leave with one more comment?
Please.
The, we have a donor who has come forward and we're putting together a work plan on the Antiquities Act, on how to, on the Antiquities Act. And if, if you look at our report on the Bears Ears on, of 2016, that's called the legitimacy and if, that's, I don't remember the title of the, the, the report, but it's in your electronic copies of, that this board has. But we already provided a test, a series of tests and we have a donor that we're preparing a work plan for that will prepare, hopefully prepare the public record to go up to the Supreme Court of the United States because the Supreme Court has asked for, they said from the courthouse steps, give us a monument. We think this is the one.
Sounds like there's an opportunity to work together. It didn't just happen on Bears Ears. It, it happened at Grand, this Clonte Staircase, you know, the, the Bage monument that was just declared by the Biden administration. In two and a half years, that was his fifth designation under the Antiquities Act. It's ridiculous and we have to take a stand.
Our report helped the Trump administration make, made, make decisions. We're on record under the Huff Post, Huffington Post as being our report that they use to make decisions to roll back Bears Ears.
Again, thank you again for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We're going to move into the consent agenda. Supervisor Bishop, would you like to remove any of the items from the consent agenda this morning?
Number eight, please.
Supervisor Angus?
Nothing.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number seven, number 12, number 13, number 21, number 22, number 27 and number 31.
Wow.
Thank you. Supervisor Johnson?
None.
Thank you. Looking for motion to approve the consent agenda minus items seven, eight, 12, 13, 21, 22, 27 and 31.
So moved.
You've heard that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
You've heard that motion, second? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? As appear to have it, do you have it? So ordered. Item number eight, Supervisor Bishop.
Seven.
Oh, excuse me, item number seven, Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was asked by a member of the public, Stephen Lee, who's walking out of the room now to pull this off the agenda, so he should probably come back down and testify about it.
Hi. I think that the, from what I've heard of the law is that, you know, as was stated earlier, that a conviction would actually have to occur. And from everybody on this side of the room that tells me, you know, it's none of my business, I'm not a member of the GOP about what this whole issue is about. If it's none of my business and it's a private thing within the GOP, why is it coming before a public county board of supervisors?
Sir, this is actually the appointment of precinct committeemen that Edwards requested by the chairman, which is the process. So this is the normal process to appoint precinct committeemen to vacant seats.
Right. But if, but in order for a precinct committeeman to be appointed, don't they have to be approved and recommended by the district director, which the district director, even though they haven't let her go into her office or conduct any business, is Misty Devaney, from what I understand, was elected by more than a two to one margin. And so then for someone else to be making this appointment or recommending this appointment other than Misty Devaney is outside the, the rule in law.
The, that's an internal process of the Republican Party bylaws. What state statute tells us is that the chairman of the Republican Party or the Democrat Party forwards those names to the board of supervisors for approval.
But the--
So we're not here to enforce the bylaws of, of a private group.
Well, it sounds like you are if you're willing to uphold just what one person or group is recommending.
On this issue, this is the process. If you have an internal issue amongst, inside of the Republican Party bylaws, that's for the Republican Party to take up themselves. The state statute says that the chairman of the party forwards the names of the, of replacement PCs to the board of supervisors for appointment. That's state statute.
In order for them to have empty seats, I'm not privy to it unless there were empty seats pre-existing, they're trying to replace seats that haven't been removed.
No, they have vacancies.
Oh, okay.
These are to fill vacant, vacant spots. And this is done all the time.
Okay. Well, it would be nice if it was done--
Just happens to be Bullhead City precinct or appointees this time.
I don't know whether, you know, in the realm of law, but I would think that, you know, a democratic process should prevail. And since the Republican Party's internal, I've heard from both sides, a statement that the district director and what I've seen in writing, that the district director needs to first approve of the, of those domines before they could come to here, then they've got a violation within their own structure.
Let me just, I am the parliamentarian for the Mojave County Republican Central Committee. I know the bylaws of the, of the county Republican Party. That is an internal process that's within the Republican Party and not a process that would, to be dealt with here. State statute, once again, says that the chairman of the Republican Party forwards the names to the board of supervisors. The board of supervisors then make the appointment. It's the same with the Democrat Party. If whatever their rules are on how they determine those names go to their chairman, that is not our concern. That's the concern of their own group. The concern is that the chairman refers those to the board of supervisors for appointment. The democratic process that you, you speak of was done by the legislature under our Republican form of government. That's the democratic process. They set the statute, we're operating under the statute.
Attorney Esmond?
My question, item number seven, this is an administrative, administrative action from this board. I mean, correct?
It's an appointment of office. They're appointing somebody just like--
I mean--
A couple of weeks ago, we appointed a new assessor.
I see both items seven and eight as administrative processes. Thank you. Any other comments from our board members?
If I could just say one thing, I know that Nan Nickel and Steve Robinson know much more about this than I do. They're members of the Republican Party and I know they had also contacted you allegedly, Ron, on this same issue to have this agenda item polled. And I would think allowing them to speak would, would make a better argument than I'm able to make. I was kind of caught off guard that you wanted me to testify here and I wasn't prepared. But I think they are better prepared if you're willing to hear from especially Steve Robinson.
No.
If Mr. Robinson wants to come down and talk, and talk about it, that's fine with me, but it's the chairman's meeting, so the chairman will decide.
Oh, Lord.
I don't have anybody signed up to speak on item number seven. I'm looking for what the pleasure of the board is.
Mr. Chairman?
Chairman Lingerfelter?
Supervisor Bishop?
I make a motion that we approve, item number seven as presented.
Second.
You've heard that motion, second? Any additional discussion?
Second.
Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As appear to have it, do you have it? So ordered. Item number eight, Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've heard from both sides of this controversial agenda item here this morning. I would like the county attorney to weigh on as to whether or not this board has the legal statutory authority to approve the request from the Republican Central Committee as proposed. Mr. Esmond, could, could you answer that, please? Or are you able?
Chairman Lingerfelter, if I may? Please. So what we're looking at is really three different statutes. We're looking at 16821, 16820, 16822 and then 38291. And what, what you have is the chairman of the political party recommends to the board of supervisors, the board of supervisors then can fill a vacancy if there's a vacancy exists. There are statutory reasons for vacancy. The statutory reasons are outlined in, three, they're outlined in 38291 as well as I believe there's also two other vacancy provisions in 16822. Essentially, if they've moved from the precinct, if they're no longer a, if they're, if they've moved from the precinct or they're no longer a member of the party, that would be reasons to, to determine a vacancy. Or there's the, I believe, 10 different reasons under 38291. And what has been alleged here is the provisions that the persons holding the office have ceased the discharge of their duties for a period of three consecutive months. And the other one is conviction of the person holding the office of a felony or an offense involving a violation of the person's official duties. So that's for the board to decide. And bottom line is the board decides whether a vacancy exists. If a vacancy exists, then you can appoint. You have to determine if the person has ceased to discharge their duties for three consecutive months or determine if a conviction has occurred. I don't think there's been a conviction. I think it does look, if you look at the statutory language, it looks like it's a conviction of an offense. That's just my opinion on that. I haven't, there, there isn't really any cases that address that. I haven't really found anything yet on that. So really it comes down to, does the board believe that a vacancy occurs on the basis that the person has ceased to discharge their duties for three consecutive months? It's for the board to decide. The board decides if a vacancy exists. That's the only reason why you can remove the person.
So in this, this case, we've heard testimony that this appointment just recently occurred. So Jeannie Kench, can you confirm that this has, has been three consecutive months since they were appointed?
Yes, Chairman Lingerfelter, Supervisor Bishop, yes, it's been over three months. We haven't received any-- We haven't received any registration to vote documents from District Two as a whole. We receive them from each district, and our county registered to vote director puts them all in a report for me, and I have not received any. So that goes in line with not getting registers to vote, but it also indicates that, that they were to violate our, our goals. I really would like to finish my speech, if you might, because I only had a minute.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. As we noted before, those deemed elected can vote for the executive committee and attend the state mandatory as state committeemen. Those that were appointed by the chairman cannot. I am not asking to vacate on any elected PCs, as I noted before. The toxic environment coming from District Two headquarters forced me to temporarily, temporarily close the office until I was certain the bad behavior was eliminated. The messaging came out of that office scared volunteers away, unfairly criticized our esteemed elected officials, including some of you, and perpetrated conspiracy-based information that forced potential Republicans to stay clear of our party headquarters. The negative drama is now, is not warranted nor wanted by any District Two Republicans. Bad behavior must have consequences. As the chairman of the Mojave County Republican Party, I am mandated to do all I can to protect our party. As the party leader, it is easy to see that vacating a couple PCs with bad behavior is what's best for the success of our party in District Two. Nothing in statute prohibits me from vacating an appointment, appointed PC. And the intent to allow a vacancy is clear when reading ARS sixteen-eight-twenty-one. In the Mojave County Republican Central Committee bylaws, Article Two, objectives, the objective this organization shall be to promote an informed electorate through political education and to foster loyalty to the Republican Party and to promote its ideals. Dear board members, the bad behavior I have witnessed and been notified is happening for months is definitely not fostering loyalty to the Republican Party. Additionally, I spoke to the Arizona GOP chairman Jeff DeWitt this weekend at a chairman meeting, and he agrees with my argument. He believes chairs should be able to lead as necessary, and the chairman agreed. Please vote to allow this vacancy so District Two can be united in our focus to succeed in the 2024 election. And I hope I answered your question, Ms. Bishop.
So, Ms. Kench, if, if we vote to approve these vacancies, what's going to prevent you from coming back, board meeting after board meeting, requesting more removals until everybody gets along?
I, I don't know if there's anything that's going to prevent it. Their, their behavior, the bad behavior, if it stops. I have no intentions of doing this. I had no intentions of doing this. I was, you were told that I ignored them. I never did. You were told that I was a horrible person. I've done everything I can for us to work together, and what they brought in was a toxic environment to not allow that to happen. So I'm trying, as the leader, to do the only thing I can see to protect our party and allow District Two to, to, to go united. There isn't anything, you're right, but I tell you, the rest of the counties, they're all waiting for this to happen so they can also do the same thing if they need to, because bad behavior should always have consequences.
Seems like Mojave County is always leading the rest of the state politically.
And I'm proud of you for that. Thank you.
But, Mr. Attorney, bad behavior, is, is that considered part of a precinct committeeman's official duties? Or, I'm trying to make sure that if we make a decision today, that it's the right decision legally.
So Chairman Lingenfelter, Supervisor Bishop, the only basis for removal is in statute. You have to, if, if you want to legally remove any position, you have to determine whether a vacancy occurs in accordance with the statutes, in accordance with the law. Bad behavior is not one of them. It specifically spells out exactly what the vacancies can be. I've identified those. If they've, if they've, if they have, if they have moved from the, from the precinct or moved from the district, if they've changed their party, or one of the ten different provisions under thirty-eight-two-ninety-one, those are the, those are the grounds to determine a vacancy. That's it. It's not bad behavior.
Okay, Jeannie, Ms. Kench, can you tell me what the, what the violations would be?
So, um, an offense, an offense involving violation of the person's official duties is one of those reasons, and our censor to them, the Mojave County Republican Central Committee, Executive Committee censored them due to their bad behavior and how they are providing a division in our party and harming our party. We also have a restraining order that was approved by Judge Huerta for them not to come to the headquarters because of the division of our party. So that might not be the definition of bad behavior, but to, to us, that is definitely a, a definition of offensive, involved offenses involving the violation of the person's official duties.
So I'm looking for what those offenses of official duties are. What exactly did they do to be censored?
Multiple emails, multiple social media posts, multiple ways to try to put division into our party. That is what they did. No, there's not a law that says that you can't divide the party, and, but I believe that the law that says that an offense involving a violation of the person's official duties, and the official duties are everything that I've mentioned as well, as well as violating our bylaws.
Yeah, that's, it's very frustrating. I mean, it's, it's, it's kind of like what I experienced earlier when, when a constituent said things about me that were, right, lies. It's very frustrating, but I don't think it's against the law. You know, if, if somebody wants to stand up at the podium and, and lie, I don't think there's anything against the law unless you're under oath, and you're certainly not at the podium, so I'm, I'm kind of confused, so maybe somebody else can.
Supervisor Angus.
First, I want to say, District Two is my district, and everyone who got up to speak today are my friends, some of the people I brought in to the party. And up until somewhat recently, we have worked together, together and done fantastic things, and it is breaking my heart to hear what it has dissolved into, and it's got to stop. But that all being said, I heard a lot about First Amendment. The MCRCC is a private nonprofit organization, not a government. The First Amendment is to limit power of the government, okay? So I don't even see that as part. Any organization you belong to, a nonprofit that has bylaws, you abide by the bylaws. I don't think, and I don't know how this has come up, I don't think people understand what their job is as a PC, because it's not what has been happening lately. You can go and do things on your own. I say that people form a PAC, a political action committee, go after the people, the elected people you want to, but that's not the role of a PC within the party. It's to register and promote and get Republicans elected, or any, or Democrats, if it's in the Democrat Party. When we, as a board, vote on PC appointments, as we do most every meeting, we approve it because the assumption is the applicants have been vetted by the political party chairs. I do not go through the names and research myself on whether or not they should be PCs. Again, it's just the formal process for us. Now we're being asked to approve another process item that the chairwoman has put in front of us, and I'm going to assume that the chairwoman has done her research and that this is a legal action. I do not believe it is my job as a county supervisor to get involved with the inner workings of a political party. You do not want that. If people have a problem with the chairwoman's actions, there is recourse within the political party, and that's where this belongs. We are being asked to vote on this today because that is how it works as defined by the state statute.
Attorney Esplin? I know you said in one of your, your explanations there that there was ten criteria. Listening to both sides, lot of subjectivity, and I'll tell you, the air is heavy in here, in this auditorium. It really is. But I don't think, I really don't think that, you know, I view this as an administrative function of this board. It doesn't matter what political party it is, whether it's Democratic Party or the Republican Party, the leadership that you have elected and put into place brings this board appointments, and logically, that would go the opposite way, too. I don't think that it's the job of this board of supervisors to arbitrate squabbles within the political parties. I don't think that's our job. It's not. If you have a problem with leadership or whatever, use your bylaws or whatever systems you have within those political parties and solve it internally. And I hope that you guys get it together before the presidential election, because we need you, all unified. You know, that's, that's how I see it. This board is not going to be junior high, period seven arbiter of, of squabbles. That's not how it works. We, we trust the, the leadership that you have all elected in both the Democratic and Republican Parties to bring, to bring PCs, to, to do your processes, and, and when it gets to us, it's administrative and we approve or deny. So that's, that's where I see it. Do you have any other questions or comments? Supervisor Johnson?
I think it's more, more important than that. We appoint somebody to an elected position, much as we have appointed supervisors, state legislators, judges to positions. There's no difference, in my opinion, from somebody who gets elected as a PC than somebody who gets elected as a supervisor. They went through the process. Once we appoint this person, it is incumbent upon us, if we want to remove him, it's us removing him, it's not the party removing him. We are the, the body that removes him, and that's what Attorney Esplin's saying. And if you're going to remove people today, you'd better have good reasons. This board could possibly be sued for removing somebody from office without having a good reason.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We just do not have the authority to remove PCs for bad behavior. That's what it boils down to. It says that you're declaring it vacant. It's not vacant because I saw both those ladies at the last quarterly meeting, so they have not abandoned their position. As far as anything getting done, that, that new director can't get much done because they, they can't get in the office to do it. But I don't see it in statute as something that we have the authority to do. If you'd abandoned your position, if you lost your right to vote, if you moved out of your precinct, if you changed parties, those are all things we can act on, but bad behavior, we can't act on. You know, and as far as First Amendment rights, I didn't give up my First Amendment rights when I became a PC twenty-eight years ago. I still have those rights. I have the rights to badmouth other elected officials if I so choose to do that, because that's the American way. The bylaws don't address that. And when, and I was party chairman, I gave the people the freedom to do that. You cannot endorse a candidate as a precinct committeeman. You can't say, I am a precinct committeeman and I am endorsing this person in the primary. That, that's a violation. But you, people support the candidate that they choose to support. But that, what it really boils down to, whether I, you know, I was a brunt of some of the behavior, but, you know, that's their right. If they wanted, if they wanted, they better be able to defend it. If they want to debate my position, I'm more than happy to debate my position, as they do here all the time. But we don't have the ability to remove them for bad behavior. That, the legislature does not give us that authority, and that's really what it boils down to me, is do we have the authority to remove them for that behavior or not? And I don't see that we do. Thank you.
Attorney Esplin, just so I'm clear, the ten criteria, or you said something about ten criteria, what does that have to do with this process? Under, under thirty-eight-two-ninety-one, I think is what you said?
So, Chairman Lingenfelter, a good question. The statutes, I believe it's sixteen-eight-twenty-one, says that the, that the board defines whether there's a vacancy. So the board has to decide, is there a vacancy? And to determine if there's a vacancy, you look what the statutes say, and thirty-eight-two-ninety-one says these are vacancies. If there's a death in office, if a person has become insane, if they've resigned from office, if they've been removed for whatever reason, if, just go through that thing, it's actually twelve different reasons. So those twelve different reasons, or if they have moved from the precinct, or if they're no longer in the party, those are the reasons. That's why you look at those, to determine if there's a vacancy. If there's a vacancy exists, if you determine there's a vacancy based on those, then you appoint a new person.
You used the word "or." That confuses me.
In what, in what context?
You said twelve, one of the twelve reasons, or multiple of the twelve reasons, or?
There's another statute that gives two, two additional reasons.
So it could be any of the twelve reasons, or the other?
Yeah, any one of those. So there's actually fourteen.
See, that's, that's where I'm-
Exactly. Yeah.
Okay.
Any one of those.
And that's in this board's determination, or is it in the Republican Party or the Democratic Party's leadership's opinion?
This board determines if there's a vacancy. There's a recommendation from the chairman.
Right.
She's given that recommendation, now the board determines if there's a vacancy.
If I understand it right, she's making a, a claim that, that it goes against, or she's citing one of the twelve reasons, or two of the twelve reasons?
Offense involving, violation of the person's official duties.
Correct. And the other one was the three months of failing to discharge their duties for three consecutive months. Correct.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman Lingenfelter.
Supervisor Bishop.
I will make the motion that we not approve this for legal reasons.
Thank you. You've heard that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As appear to have it, do you have it? So ordered. Item number twelve. Item number twelve. Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe Mr. DeShazer wanted us to discuss that.
Yes, my name's Chuck DeShazer, eight-seven-seven-eight, Polaris Road on, in Topock. This, item number twelve, if you look at your background information, you'll find that on page one and two of that background information, it's cited that you're doing this under twenty-twenty-dash-zero-seven. And then if you look to page eight and nine of the same background information that you've been given, you'll find that the notice and order did not follow twenty-twenty-seven, so therefore, the, this is opening the county. I have no idea where this property is, or the, about this abatement, or I really don't have a dog in the fight, except as a taxpayer, you're opening yourself up to a lawsuit here because the law was not followed on the notice and a bit, uh, notice and order, given that it says on the order thirty-five days, and twenty-twenty-dash-zero-seven, that was signed by Jean Bishop, when she was chair of this board, states that it needs to be thirty days specifically. It also states that the appeal process for twenty-twenty-seven needs to be before the board of supervisors at a fifteen day, and on the order itself, it's saying to the building code advisory board that is nowhere in the process of twenty-twenty-dash-zero-seven, and you have not had any amendments to twenty-twenty-dash-zero-seven, and that's what is currently being cited as how you're able to assess this property on the abatement that took place. Does anybody have any questions as to how illegal you are on this?
I'd like to bring up Tim, Director Walsh, from Development Services. Tim, will you explain what's going on, and if we have to have input from Attorney Esplin, we can do that as well.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. This item is the placement of a lien for an abatement that we did out in Walnut Creek. It was a, a structure that was burned and had sat there vacant for some time. We worked with the family, so my understanding is the occupants actually are, were deceased, actually perished with the fire. We worked with their next of kin, and those folks, gave them plenty of time. I believe the fire was back in two thousand nineteen. We worked with them, giving them time to work with insurance, probate, and all of those things, and, and ultimately, we ended up abating the structure. Notices were giving, given to the family based on both twenty-twenty-oh-seven and twenty-one-oh-three, both the nuisance abatement ordinance and the, may I continue?
Go right on ahead.
As well as, so, so they were giving both- As well as, so they were given both the nuisance abatement ordinance as well as the building ordinance. And we worked with legal through that process, through the abatement process. So ability to appeal was given, no appeal was sought, and we continued with the abatement.
Thank you. I'd open it up to the board. Supervisor Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is in my district, and I will make the motion that we approve.
Thank you. You've heard that motion?
Got a question.
Heard that motion and second. Additional discussion? Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tim, this is, so we're noticing them under both. Doesn't that create a problem on who do they appeal to? Whether they appeal to the Building Advisory Board, or whether they appeal to the Board of Supervisors?
Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Gould, it does raise some ambiguity there. And we are currently working with the attorney's office to clear up that ambiguity. Ultimately, they had the ability to appeal to both of them. No appeal was sought in either case. Well, in this case.
They were noticed under both of them and had the opportunity to appeal under both of them. Are we going to get that squared away in near future?
We are. We're working with the county attorney's office to clear that up.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Any other additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As appear to have it, do have it so ordered. Item number 13, Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to get an explanation of what's going on here when we're going from a .725 employee to a .1.0 full-time employee, and it makes no change to anything.
Sorry, just put it here so I can refer to it. So this is dealing with Colorado City. Previously, we had our LPN nurse there was... Excuse me, too. Also, just jumping in or whatever, I was expecting to talk on this one. But thank you, Chairman, Board, and members of the board. So we put this on in consideration as Colorado City continues to grow and requires attention from not only my department, but as a community. We have a... She was a 32-hour nurse working there that dealt with immunizations. Basically, all our grants that we provide for various parts of our community, she's meeting those needs in Colorado City. She's a peer of the community. She works there. And it was also with the intention that by moving her up to full-time, we would be able, she would be able to fiscally...
Not mine either.
Help reduce our, when we travel there, because it's very costly for our department, so that when there's certain meetings, she could be a better representative of us, not only for the community, but as well for us. How we're doing the 7.5 to full-time there is moving is, one, cost-saving effects, is that we have another nursing position in Bullhead that we won't fill until October. And then that will meet the budgetary for the year for an unfilled position, so it wouldn't affect the general fund. And then after that, with fiscal year '25, we already have a few losses there, so we're just going to adjust appropriately in order to just make this accommodation, so we can better meet the needs of Colorado City.
So you're using the money from an unfilled position to pave the difference between the lower FTE to go into one?
Yeah. That's basically it. It was just my need, having come in and seen what the needs were in Colorado City. And she is part of the board member for the trust there. And so she's very active, a great representative for us. She's made a lot of inroads for the community there. And so she's participated in many things that are going on. And it was also just to be fiscally minded, to be able to not have to travel as much. So $600 for a round trip sometimes or whatever, so.
Sure. Thank you, sir.
Supervisor Bishop, do you have a comment?
Yes, I'm just curious. If this board decides to freeze any new positions, is this position more important than the one coming up in October? Is something to consider?
No, for the one that was. It's filling in Bullhead City. And we currently have nurses there to be able to meet those needs, so we would be okay.
Okay, thank you.
This is in my district. I think a lot of times we forget that Colorado City is our fourth incorporated city. So I'll make a motion to approve. Heard that motion and second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? As appear to have it, do have it so ordered. Item number 21, Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item is about using E-Qualify for candidate signatures. I thought this would be worthy of discussion.
Welcome. Elections Director Temper, come to the podium.
And it is very worthy of discussion. Thank you. I'm glad you pulled it. What we're going to do here is, we're going to have a little bit of a discussion on the E-Qual brand-new call system. And I thought I'll give you a break from me this week, and I'm going to let my new election specialist describe it for you, help you through any questions. If there's nothing she can't handle, I'm just going to have to put my arm up like this because she's got it, okay?
Let's not be here till 4:30 again today, though.
That's why we're up here. Chairman Lingefelter, members of the board, thank you for having me up here to speak about this today. I want to talk to you guys about E-Qual. It's a newer type of program that is given to us by the Secretary of State. The Secretary of State has to give it as an option to all of the counties. It's new, and we were actually the third, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, out of the 15 counties to be able to onboard with this. They sent out an email and said, "If you would like to onboard, we would like to show you our program." We were the third ones to onboard. It does not cost the county any money, or the candidates any money. Basically, what you're going to be doing if you choose to move forward with this program, it's optional for the candidates. If you are a candidate running, you do not have to use E-Qual. But we're giving you the option to circulate instead of in-person nomination petitions. Candidates can put their nomination petition in this program, and voters can go through the program and sign your nomination petitions. It's convenient for the voters, and it's convenient for the candidates. You can get the minimum number of signatures needed. So when we give out our paperwork, we tell you what the minimum number of signatures required is. And you can get that number up there in through this program, E-Qual. And then the rest of the signatures, if you would like to get more than the minimum, which many people do, then you would have to go out and circulate your petition in person, just like you do as of right now. So E-Qual is actually available for cities and towns, which doesn't pertain to what we are talking about here right now. County offices, justices of the peace, and constables. The only people in the county that it is not, that they're not able to use, is clerk of the Superior Court, Superior Court judge, and precinct committeemen, and then special districts and school boards. So right now, there's two types of petitions that are available on E-Qual for the county. It's a partisan petition, and a 16341, 16341, is basically for independents. And we will be able to, if the state allows it and the law allows it, nomination petitions that are for nonpartisan, when that becomes available, we will be able to create those, and they will be able to participate if they wish to as well. So pretty much the way that we're going to kind of roll this out is, when people get their packets from us, they come in, they say they want to file, they want to run for something, we're going to give them a guide in their packet that tells them how to sign up. And one cool feature that E-Qual kind of has is, when a candidate creates their petition on there, they have a link that they can share with any voter that they wish. So if somebody says, "How can I sign your nomination petition online?" They say, "Here's the link." The voter goes in, they put in their information, and it's either their social security number and their voter ID number, or their driver's license number, and you're signed in. And then another cool feature that it has is that when you sign in as a voter, you can only sign petitions. It will only show you petitions that you're eligible to sign. So if you live in District 1, it's not going to show you petitions for District 5. Also, when you sign a petition for 1, if there's multiple people running, if you sign one petition and there's only one person that's to be elected, you will not be able to go sign other ones. So that kind of eliminates the confusion of people signing multiple people's petitions. That's pretty much all I have, and I will open it up for questions.
Great job. Any questions from the board? Hearing done. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
You want to speak?
I'm sorry. Sir, I'm not seeing a request to speak form from you.
It's on the yellow sheet.
If you spoke on the yellow sheet, then...
If you spoke on the yellow sheet, sir, then...
I did, and I spoke about this other thing.
You know, I don't see one of the white forms here, so...
It's always that you sign up for the consent agenda on the yellow sheet.
Chairman Lingefelter, as approved by this board, we directed people to sign up for call to public and consent on the yellow forms, advising them that was their time to speak. That was not my policy, but it was approved by the board.
Sure. And, sir, you did speak at the podium on this issue already?
No, I spoke about this vote registration recorder offices.
All right. I'll give you three minutes. Come up to the podium. Thank you.
Maybe you need to go back to the way it was before.
Maybe we do.
Because I signed up last week, too, and you ignored me. I don't have computer access or anything. I don't know how to do it, don't want to do it. How in the heck are you guys going to do this for me at the election? Alan's going to do it for me? Get my petitions for me? This is another... I don't even know why we have to get signatures. In California, I voted over there for 50 years. I ran for office three times. Didn't have to get one signature.
I don't know that we should use that as our example, though.
Well, why does that make you, because you've got 400 signatures? Why does that make you a better congressman or supervisor? Why does that make you better? Because you got a bunch of, you go to Rotary Club, or Chamber of Commerce, or believe in what Lydia is doing, or whatever. You shouldn't have to get nomination papers anyway. But I don't know how to do this, and unless you set this up, it's going to be unfair to people like me. So, and I signed up for 7 and 8, too, and I'm...
Chairman Lingefelter?
You said that. Oh, Supervisor Angus.
Mr. McClure, this doesn't replace signatures. It's just an added convenience if people want to do it. And the reason we get petitions is it shows that people want you to run. If we didn't have this, we'd have 5,000 people on the ballot, because anybody at any time could run for something, and it would be chaos. So this is a way of... No?
Go ahead and finish, Supervisor Angus.
I just wanted to explain to you, you had some questions as to the process, and that was it. I didn't mean for it to be a debate or to go back and forth.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I already made a motion to approve.
Heard that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Heard that motion and second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
As appear to have it, do have it so ordered. Item number 22, Supervisor Gould?
We're approving the new, the number of precincts here. And I just wanted Alan to assure me that we have made no changes. It's a very cumbersome description of the... My district talks about jeep trails. You turn left at the fire plug and use that jeep trail, and then turn at the big rock. And I just wanted to hear from Alan that these are the same precincts that we had in the last election, other than the changes to chloride, and I think it was Kingman North. So I just wanted to hear from his lips.
My lips. No changes whatsoever.
Okay.
They're exactly the same. Thank you.
That is all I needed.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 22 be adopted.
Thank you for that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Heard that motion and second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As appear to have it, do have it so ordered. Item number 27, Supervisor Gould?
What was that one? Somebody wanted that pulled. I don't think that was mine.
Scotty.
Oh, was it? Are you still here?
I think he has left the building.
Oh, this was the item about the bronze statue. And I just wanted to get a look at... I looked at the picture of the bronze statue to make sure that it was an appropriate statue to be outside of a public library. But apparently, he didn't want to hang around and talk about it. So I move that item 27 be adopted.
Second.
Heard that motion and second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? As appear to have it, do have it so ordered. Item number 31, Supervisor Gould?
I just wanted to get an explanation from Director Lotosky on what we're doing here.
Good afternoon, Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Gould, members of the board. This is a proposal by staff asking for the board's concurrence to pursue certain trade-for-services agreements with, namely, some vendors that will be participating in the Mojave County Fair that provide certain goods and services that we can use to facilitate our operations during the fair in exchange for consideration, either a reduction or waiver of certain vendor fees, or, namely, prominent advertising, you know, through banners, et cetera, you know, of the particular company that's involved in making that donation. So two things at the heart of this are, one, we have a considerable pool of fair volunteers that, as part of, they're working the fair, you know, over an extensive amount of time, usually eight-hour shifts, et cetera. You know, we were aiming to provide, you know, certain lunch considerations for them. You know, we would have vendors on site that are providing that type of food. So that's where the trade-for-services agreement come into play. Also, we do call out one specific vendor. It's Merton's Equipment. They have, as they did last year, provide all the portable lighting. It's like construction-style lighting, where one of our more prominent activities is the Saturday night livestock auction. That facility needs temporary lighting, and a vendor like that, providing that type of, you know, rental equipment in exchange for advertising at the fair, is what we're asking for.
Sure. Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Gould?
I move that item 31 be adopted.
Heard that motion. Do I have a second? Heard that motion and second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As appear to have it, do have it so ordered. Moving on to the public hearings?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Johnson?
Is it possible, if we pull my items 47 and 48 up, we have elected officials and staff that have been sitting here all morning, two and a half hours on one item, if we can get them back to work?
You said item 47 and item 48?
48, I believe they're for both.
Yeah, we can do those now. That's fine. We'll move to item number 47 on the regular agenda. Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this is a pretty easy one here. We put a freeze on all hiring of general fund positions. That doesn't mean that, as in the past, when a department head or elected official has some important position that they need filled or something, they come to the board and plead their case, and we usually approve it. So this at least freezes at the time being. I don't know if anybody wanted to address that or not. I think they're here for the other one.
We have a few members signed up. Would you all like to hear from them first? So I'll call up Presiding Judge Moss, Steve Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you, Supervisor Johnson, for pulling this up. It'll allow me to get back to the office and actually do some work, which I greatly appreciate. I wanted to talk on this item for two reasons. There's a bar on travel, and the difficulty with that is, when it comes to the courts, and I'm presuming some of the legal services, but at least when it...
This is on just the freezing part. 48's the... This is on just the freezing of positions.
47 is the... 47 includes travel.
Oh, that's okay. Never mind.
And I also need to talk about the positions, but...
Oh, okay. All right.
We have mandatory travel requirements. Mojave County is not an island, and sometimes those in other authority positions require us to do things outside the county, whether it's bailiff academy training, whether it is probation training, whether it is judicial training, we are required to appear. The only time I've ever got a judge out of the judicial conference is when a family member passed away, and the chief justice waived his appearance at that particular hearing or that particular training. So if you could on 47, if you could at least proviso, that freezes all non-mandatory county travel, because sometimes we have to go to places I would not rather be. I'd rather stay home, but sometimes we have to go. Secondly, when it comes to freezing... Um, secondly, when it comes to freezing of the positions, um, we have, if you could put it off, the effective date off for a while. Our records department and the clerk's office has three of seven positions filled. They're overwhelmed. They're interviewing nine people this week. And if you put the freeze on the, if you wrap those four into it, we're going to have to tell those interviewees, we have to go back to the board to get permission. So we'll have to hold off two weeks, a month, however much time before we can fill those positions. Um, we also have on probation and juvenile probation mandatory staffing ratios. One case carrying officer per 65 cases on the adult side, one case carrying officer for 35 cases on the juvenile side. And we're always dancing on the edge of that line to being out of compliance. And so if on the hiring side, if you can put it off, the effective date off a month, so we can confirm that we're within compliance and correct it before then, because we don't want to, we're the courts. We're not supposed to be illegal. We're not supposed to be outside the law. And we try our best to stay within that. And we have the approved positions, but paralyzing our ability to turn on a dime in order to make sure that we can keep our legal requirements in place. Um, it's difficult sometimes. And so I'd appreciate, um, if you could put a little bit of flexibility into that so that we can turn on a dime if need be. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Uh, Assessor Kench, Jeanne Kench? I don't believe she's in the auditorium anymore, so we'll move on. Jennifer Esposito?
Jennifer Esposito, um, I, I think that a hiring freeze is probably a good thing, uh, considering that everyone's in such an uproar over the budgetary issues. Obviously, if you have something that's mandated, like with the courts, as, uh, as Steve Moss brought up, there, you have to have some provision for some sort of accommodation for that. Um, I would have liked to have seen you freeze the position for engineer for the water district thing, or whatever it was that you guys voted through on the continuation of the previous meeting. At the first meeting, I had signed up to speak and I'd forgotten. And then apparently, you know, a lot of those signups forms got missed. And I was kind of surprised that in the, in the budgetary system that we have, that we would look to hire another engineer when Mr. Elters is an engineer, Mr. Wallace is an engineer, Mr. Latask is an engineer, it's like Mojave County's an Engineers Club. And, and I think that in some, some positions, I know in a real world corporation, like some people are sort of cross-trained to where, hey, you're on salary. Can I pull you in for a consultation or can I do? Maybe there is some room to do some stuff. But I think also, as Supervisor Johnson pointed out a couple of meetings ago, he said, well, apparently I don't think we can, can solve this budget thing unless we, we can't cut anymore unless we cut people. I'm good with that, Buster. I think you need to start with the two health department employees who were hired to, uh, for, under COVID, just to basically do misinformation stuff and get, you know, encourage people to do this, that, or the other. There's probably some employees that maybe that you could cut, and maybe that would give you some freedom to hire in some of the more required positions like the courts. And I know this was your thing, Hildy, but I don't think we need a public information officer at this point in time. Uh, you know, maybe it was a good idea at the time, but I think that that's what the newspapers are for. And I think there should be somebody in every department who can write a press release. Um, it's not hard to do. You can look it up on the internet, right? Um, and, and of course, approved by the county manager, any press release that would go out. But, but I think there's some room to maybe eliminate some positions, free some other ones up. So maybe it would be a good idea to, to freeze things, just at least temporarily, until you get through this budget process and you actually look in the departments of where, where you can, maybe somebody loses a position in one department, they can apply for an opening in another. They may not lose their job, but they may, there may be another place that they could be utilized with their experience. So I think it's a good idea to look at this issue at this time, especially with the budget meetings going forward, and maybe just take a temporary pause or breather on hiring a bunch of new people until we resolve the, the budget issues going forward. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
If, if I may, I didn't realize that was all in there. I was looking at the wrong agenda. But it was never intended to stop travel for anybody to do business. So the, the courts have to go to, you know, the attorneys have to go to a, a case in another county, anything like, so worker-related stuff was not that way. It was mostly to do with conferences and, uh, any place where we can do Zoom meetings like we did before during the COVID, you know. So it had nothing to do with not letting the sheriff drive to his calls. He could use Zoom, I guess, if he, if he was really trying to save us some money, but.
Chairman Lienfelder? May I ask you something? Um, I appreciate Supervisor Johnson's attempt to kind of speed up our process in this. Um, we seem to have been, you know, in the wild at our last budget meeting, so I do appreciate focusing more. But if the next agenda item is to ask for an 18% across-the-board cut, these decisions should be made within the departments, that they'll know what is discretionary, um, uh, travel and stuff like that. I think this is jumping the gun, being that we're going to meet again September 20th. It should all be put in one into piecemeal. It like this makes me uncomfortable, frankly.
Uh, we've got Jeff Esposito signed up, and then I'm going to call back Assessor Kench and Sheriff, if you want to talk as well. I assume that's why you're sitting in the front row, so.
Chairman Lienfelder, when you're finished with the public, I'd like to speak as well.
Thank you.
Jeff Esposito, uh, I agree with Buster Johnson's, um, whatever this thing is. Anyway, um, and I believe that we should use Judges Moss's exceptions. And, uh, I don't believe what Hildy just said. I, it's not up to the department's managers. It is up to you five. You five are the overseers of this county. Take control. Thank you. We're in a serious situation.
Thank you, sir. Assessor Kench?
Chairman Lienfelder, thank you, the board, uh, with my assessor hat on. I appreciate you having me up here again. Um, from our office, uh, in regards to item agenda number 47, the hiring freeze. We have been here before in 2008, and to this day, we have not recovered from the 2008. Buster remembers that. Industry standard state, we have 103 employees. In 2008, we had 57 employees. When a freeze was cut, it was instituted, and we now have 44 employees, and we're still working at 44 employees. The few times that we've tried to ask for additional employees, we've decided to go to other methods like AI and so forth, so we didn't ask for more. Um, an industry standard says that we have 2,600 parcels per employee. Similar counties like Coconino have 3,000 parcels per employee. And I have one position for 6,000 parcels per employee. So comparatively, half-staffed or double-worked, how you want to look at it. Um, we're doing the best we can, and I believe as being the conservative department that we are, we're doing a fantastic job with what we have. But if we were to go down more in our employees, we couldn't do that. The travel freeze, we have critical, uh, critical training needs and must travel to service our area. Continuing education requirements for all appraiser staff, um, not, not all educated is on the line. Appraisers must be certified to perform their duties. Currently, three staff enrolled in certification training. Um, ma- many travels already are scheduled. So like just going up to Colorado City, we schedule it in months in advance. What would we do when we have to travel to there? Conferences attended by limited professional staff. Very, very few of us in our, in our office actually go to conferences. Uh, but it provides the contact with the peers and solves local issues and pursues efficiencies that we work so well to get when we go to the conferences. We don't come back empty-handed. Um, of course, the strip area requires travel with annual visits, appeals, and outreach, and we're statutorily obligated. So please think of all of those things when you decide on whether you're going to do a hiring freeze or a travel freeze. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Sheriff Schuster.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you. I guess I'm here because I'm a bit confused. This board collectively passed a budget, a budget that I had worked on diligently for the sheriff's office to allow for increases to satisfy our law enforcement needs to serve the public. Uh, that was done. So we funded the need, and now we're seeing applications coming in, and we're starting to address these downturns. And here we are, less than a month later, and we're saying, no, we're going to unfund that by taking away the ability to fill the positions that need to be filled. So I guess I, I'm here looking for a direction from this board. I, I really am unclear why a budget was passed to address our needs, and now we're looking at, you know, reducing that budget. I, I understand we're in a, in a tight spot financially. Uh, you have a year, a little less than a year now to figure that out, and I don't envy your task, but you're making my responsibility almost impossible. I have 14 openings for street deputies, and if you're going to tell me today that I can't fill those positions, I'm simply going to put it back on you that you unfunded the positions you just gave me. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Sheriff. Supervisor Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I would be in support of, um, looking at, at travel expenses. Uh, I had finance pull-up for fiscal year '23 just for this board. We went all the way from spending $2,000 for a supervisor all the way up to $15,000 on, on travel. And I don't know how much of that was, was actually necessary because we do have the ability to attend a lot of these meetings on, on Zoom. And, you know, some of these meetings, other people maybe will do, attend instead. Like I think the Supervisor Lienfelder, you went to a water meeting, rural groundwater, and I think Jamie Kelly was there to represent us, but you went to support the county as well. Um, then there was, um, a couple days ago, there were 11 staff members that went up to the Arizona Strip to attend a meeting, which, um, it's commendable because the people up there don't feel like they get representation. So to take our entire, um, uh, staff up there, let me see. We had the top three members of the sheriff's office up there, the assessor, the recorder, the treasurer, development services director, public works director, the public health director, we had a secretary, and we had the pilot all up there for a meeting that possibly could have been done on Zoom with, with maybe you just up there leading it. Um, but, you know, I think we have some CSA conferences coming up. We have NACO meetings, a lot of these things, we, it's nice to go, but is it really necessary, especially, um, when we're looking at such a budget deficit? So I would support limiting the travel and, and looking at seriously and, and making sure that it's mandated travel or necessary travel before we, um, spend county funds on that. And as far as the, um, freezing of general fund employees, I think if, if that's done on an individual department needs, because there's some departments that are, are, are large and could absorb some of these vacancies. There's other departments that absolutely could not. So I think we need to look at these on an individual basis. But, um, I support Supervisor Johnson's recommendation and understand the need for it.
Supervisor Agus.
Yeah, I, I just have a question for Supervisor Bishop. So you say, who, who decides what's needed and what's not needed? Because I'm sure Supervisor Lienfelder, Chairman Lienfelder, thought that that trip was very important. So is your say more important than his say? I mean, who makes that decision? What's important and what's not important? I think showing up, and, and, and especially now with everything that's going on with the federal government and showing your face that we're not backing down, I think that's important. Supervisor Johnson might not think that's important. So who makes that decision?
I think the voters make that decision. I think if we, uh, vote to limit travel and freeze some positions on an individual, um, basis, based on department size and need and the mandated travel, I think the voters will see who's, who's trying to cut back and save money, and they'll.
That's not the question.
They'll elect us or they'll not.
That's the question. So you're saying this is a political issue for you?
No, I think it's an individual department.
Right. So, which goes to my thing that we should wait and just hear what the departments, because they know best. They know it's mandated. They know if they have to cut 18%, believe me, they're going to cut non, um, non-important travel. So again, we're making this decision, um, and what about for us? Who's going to make the decision for us?
I think we should make the decision ourselves. If we vote to limit travel, I, I think, I think any responsible elected person would do just that.
Okay, but that's pretty much not what you said before. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Um, I appreciate Supervisor Johnson putting this on the agenda. I do think that this, these things that are included in this agenda warrant further discussion. We talked about it a little bit during our first special budget meeting, and I know that staff has been tasked with, with further analysis and bringing these things back for us to consider implementing. Is that, is that not correct, Manager Elters?
Um, Mr. Chairman, board members, yes, indeed. Uh, we have, uh, a number of directions that we're preparing information for to bring to the board at the September 20th special board meeting, and we're prepared to do more. And while I have the floor, if I may, just two thoughts. One, uh, consistent with, with what you're hearing from, um, elected and, and, uh, other department heads, we continue to be challenged with attracting professionals regardless. It's in, in the legal arena, uh, both the prosecution side of the family as well as the defense side. In fact, uh, the, we have, we have virtual trials that are, uh, being conducted in Mojave County. My understanding is more than any other county, simply because we do not have the attorneys here to, um, conduct them. And as I've reported to you before, the vacancies continue to be a challenge for us, Mr. Chairman and board members. So we carry a lot of vacancies and, um, I think the, the, um, hiring freeze at this time, uh, may have far more detrimental effects. Um, we, we do, we are selective in what positions we do fill. But, um, in the public works department, to mention engineers, we have not been able to attract engineers. We have multiple vacancies, and it really continues to elude us. I'll say one more thing, which is smaller departments, uh, smaller departments like HR, uh, and procurement that consist of a handful of people. Two or three vacancies can be absolutely decimating to them. And, and during the time when we do open enrollment for, for benefits, benefits and health insurance and such, uh, that it, that is really very challenging to get through and do successfully. So, uh, I, I'm not, I understand the urgency and I'm, I'm with you. Uh, but it may be, there may be an opportunity here to explore these a little further, bring the board more information, and, uh, hopefully, uh, all of us work together to make an informed decision. So I'm not, I'm not debating the need for it, but timing maybe, um, we can bring you more information to work with. Thank you.
Thank you. The only other thing that I would say is, um, District One is very large. Um, and for the past three years now, um, one time a year, I've, I've organized, my office has organized, um, a community meeting for Beaver Dam, Littlefield, and Scenic, and we all go there. The citizens appreciate that, one-time event, to go up and be able to interact face-to-face with their elected officials, with the departments. Um, and just because you don't have those meetings, and it makes your office look bad. Maybe Golden Valley residents would like to have a meeting like that as well. Um, because.
Seriously?
I can't just, I can't just drive up there every day. The voters up there appreciate it, and you will see that in the polls.
Chairman Lienfelder? Yes, thank you. So just to recap, we went from having a solution that would have 100% funded law enforcement in this county, the thing we say is the most important part of government, to now talking about unfunding the police. That's just a fact. That is not brow-beating. That is a fact. And I want everyone to understand that, that we had a solution to this. And now we're here, and we have to make these very difficult, but I, over my dead body, am I going to unfund our law enforcement?
Pleasure, board. Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you. Cinderella doesn't have the money to go to the ball anymore. Mojave County has no money at all. We had this meeting, which I wasn't agreed with, for having a, this budget meeting. We came up with no ideas at all. I proposed, you, you've got to start somewhere. And the only way you're going to start is by stopping your, your hiring. You're going to have to stop your spending. Um, I agree with.
to have to stop your spending. I agree with Supervisor Angus that it's good to have people at these meetings, but we don't have the money to go to meetings. I mean, we are poor now, and if we don't start putting something forward, having these monthly meetings is going to do us no good. That's the only reason I brought this forward, and as far as I'm concerned, it's going to be my last attempt. I brought a few things forward, and we don't seem to get anywhere, so somebody else come up with some ideas. Thank you.
Supervisor Angus.
Yes, and I do like that we're going to be talking on September 20th about the 18% across the board cut.
It wasn't decided.
Well, if it is decided to do that, that would be, well, I obviously support it too, and I don't, I can't imagine anyone else because we have no choice, but that would be the time to talk about this as a whole. Again, to just, you know, throw this out and do this without really understanding what the what it's going to, the unintended consequences of all, I think is is negligent at best. So again, I do appreciate Supervisor Johnson, you trying to move us forward, and we definitely needed that, you know, after our last meeting. We needed some direction, and and I thank you for providing that, but I think that it all belongs in 48.
Supervisor Gold.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I commend Supervisor Johnson for putting forth a broad plan, and I think the reason that he put forth a broad plan is so that we could have a discussion on how do we narrow that plan. You know, if we don't want it to apply to law enforcement or the mandatory positions of the courts, we can make those exceptions. Since we cannot communicate with each other except at a board meeting, you really have no other way to have the discussion. You know, I don't think it's an all-or-nothing thing. I think we have, there's room for some negotiation, and that's kind of what we've been discussing is the various things that we could eliminate from a total hiring ban and a total travel ban. And we should take a look at those. I'm still willing to move forward with a with a hiring ban, but I think we need to narrow it down so that it works. Thank you.
Supervisor Bishop.
I'd just like to add that Supervisor Johnson, Gold, I think we all have good good points here, but I think we can't wait until fiscal year 2024 to to start this. I think we need to start cutting back now, and that's why I suggested that maybe we we stop some of the travel, do more on Zoom, consider when we're doing the traveling, you know, is it really necessary? Can can we not take a handful of people to a meeting where one person could go and maybe bring bring back the issues to the board? So that's what I'm saying is, let's not wait until next year to do this. Let's start doing it right now and make make cuts where we can.
I'm I'm definitely for discretionary travel reductions. I'm definitely for some sort of a hiring freeze. I don't know what it looks like, and I really want to see the data before we go ready, fire, aim. That's where I stand. I mean, I want to know what the impact of these things are, how much are going to be saved. What's the pleasure of the board? Oh, sorry, Manager Elters.
I just would say, in the interest of of upholding the direction of the board, my only ask of you is be as clear and as explicit as to what we're talking about in the way of travel and who. Because ultimately, unless you, the board, want to make those decisions, those will probably come through the county manager's office. I just need direction from you to carry forth your will and your intent. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Mornin, you have something?
Thank you, Chairman Linganfelter. I just want to just briefly mention that during our FY '24 budget discussions leading up to the adoption of the final budget, there were numerous scenarios discussed that included change on the revenue side of this formula. We were not able to come to an agreement there, but when we're looking at personnel on on the expense side of that formula, we look at fiscal '23, we had about $5 million or so in vacancy savings at the end of the year. Here we are in the second month of the new fiscal year. I would just ask the board to give us a little bit more time to bring back to September 20th, as Manager Elters has has spoken about, you know, to bring you more details on the vacancies that we have, give some time to present a more complete picture and maybe some more specific directions as far as, you know, if if a hiring freeze is put in place, what does that look like? Is it for the entirety of the remainder of the fiscal year? Is it for 30 days, 60 days, 90 days until these budget discussions can proceed a little bit more? And we get into, you know, as the board has expressed its desire to look at department by department and and where can cuts be made, where can expenses be reined in, whether that's capital projects, whatever whatever it may be, whatever that looks like, to give us a little bit more time. Manager Elters has has spoken about the fact that when you're painting with a broad brush, the the smaller departments or even larger departments, you know, some large departments may have a lot of vacancies right now, and they've been getting by on less than they would ideally get by on. And so a hiring freeze, if a department is fully staffed, it may be less impactful to that department, but painting with a broad brush really doesn't give us a lot of room to address those specific situations for the departments. And as far as travel goes, I would just ask that if you do put a travel freeze, that we be very specific. Is that all nondiscretionary travel? Is that in-county? Is it out-of-county? Is it out-of-state travel? Does it apply to the elected officials? Just I would just ask that you would be as specific as possible so that we have the the guardrails and the parameters in place as we move forward.
Thank you. See, this is the problem we're having. Staff is not bringing us any solutions. They only dropped this on our lap and said, okay, you guys figure it out. I bring something forward, whether it's obviously not not unanimous with the board to say, oh, hey, travel and everything else. Nobody's saying, oh, well, I want to, all I want to do is protect my department. You know, they want, oh, let's go through each each individual department here. That is not our job to do that. Staff is supposed to be bringing us saying, hey, we just came up with an idea to save $1,000 here, $10,000 there. This is being put on five people who were elected to oversee the county, not run the finance department and all these other departments we have. If we're not going to come up with some ideas and say, hey, this is what you're going to have to do, then the county should be, the staff should be coming up with ideas to say, here's how we're going to balance this budget for you, and that without raising taxes. That's all. Thank you.
Supervisor Johnson, my my question is a clarification question to you. Is your intent to approve this and direct staff to bring back how these things would would be structured and play out? Because right now, it's written very, very broadly.
I could direct this to come back at our at our next meeting. It was never the intention, we've done this in the past, but it was never the intention to stop outside county travel or if the attorneys have to go for a court case or, I mean, there are certain things that come up where, you know, we're required, you know, the governor calls and says, hey, we need you here for this, or something like that, even even as far as Washington DC, if somebody calls and says, hey, we need somebody to testify, we do those. It would mostly pertain to the staff and and their travel. And while I understand, like Ms. Kench brought up, you know, I need to keep my people educated. We all need to keep our people educated, but we just don't have the money. I mean, I could, with the, travel is just a small thing. We kind of all travel. It's not that much, but it's start. Same thing with the freezing. The freezing, I don't know how the courts would do that. They could meet with the manager, but we always in the past, when we've frozen hiring, if you needed somebody, you came in and brought to the board and said, hey, this is what we're going to do, and we said, yeah, okay, hire that person. It wouldn't stop anybody from running their department. It's not meant to have people so short-staffed that they can't do anything. It's just kind of a common sense program, you know, the same thing with buildings. I mean, if we don't have the money, we should stop buildings. I mean, we have to start somewhere, and whether, you know, 1 million is part of that 18 and a half, but so far, we've done nothing to stop any, stop the bleeding. That's that's my whole thing, and it's getting really frustrating, and I have to talk to my people. Thank you.
I appreciate maybe bringing it back, and you could come back with a bit more articulation. That's my opinion. Anybody else? Supervisor Angus.
Yeah, I I agree. This all belongs together, the big picture, and I think that would be at the September 20th, have a little bit more clarity on all of this, instead of just shooting from the hip and then letting everybody sort of interpret it.
I think, I don't know how much clearer I could make it. I can't go through and say, you know, I don't want this person to have travel and that person to have travel. It's it's a starting point for a discussion to say what we're going to do. I mean, I could break it down, you know, make a motion to freeze all hiring. I could try that right now if I get a second. We could go thinking one by one if you want. I'll make that motion.
Heard that motion in second.
Discussion.
Supervisor Angus.
And that includes law enforcement.
Includes every department.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none on favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. I appear to have it. Do you have it? So ordered. Item number 48.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I might as well keep going on this, supervisor Wanda brought. Make a motion to freeze all out-of-county travel.
Wasn't that included in the motion?
No, it was just the hiring.
Are we able to entertain?
What is the motion?
Several motions on one item?
Yes.
Okay. So would you repeat the motion, please, sir? Supervisor?
Was it on?
To the board, you want to?
Travel.
Repeat the motion.
Chairman Linganfelter, the motion was to freeze all out-of-county travel.
Discussion.
Supervisor Angus.
Again, so does that mean I can't go and travel somewhere? You can't go, she can't go? Is that is that, when you say all, it means everybody?
Everybody.
Even the people who have to go for licensing, everything?
Well, they could come back through the manager to the board saying, hey, we need to...
So they have to come in, they have to come and and every single time to the board, and we lot over that and tell them that what they can and cannot do. It seems like a really bad way of 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 fixing this problem, just a really bad way.
It's not, it's not limited to discretionary. It's it's across the board.
Across the board. I mean, the only way you're going to do it is if everybody's affected by it.
Would that include assessors, folks that are traveling up to the strip and other areas to assess properties?
No, in in county, doing your job, there's nothing, nothing there. That's why I said out-of-county.
That's where the nuances come in. I
Excuse me.
Supervisor Angus.
Thank you. So I think doing my job is is going out to some meeting. I think that's important in my job. So this board gets to decide what I what I do in my job?
What we're looking at is travel out of the county, so it wouldn't be, wouldn't affect your job.
Well, if I need to go out of the county to meet with another supervisor and need needs to go to Phoenix and meet with the governor, I can't do that.
Well, we have to start somewhere with government. We have no money.
I understand that, but that's why I'm saying we have to look at, instead of doing this knee-jerk reaction, we need to look at it as a whole, or else, you know, we can have unintended consequences that are going to come to haunt us for years. So I think we just need to do this soberly and not sort of just throw it out there.
To me, the knee-jerk reaction was passing a budget that put us 18 and a half million in debt and adding to it. This is just trying to rein in the spending.
I understand. I do. But I think we need to do it in a better manner than this.
I don't know that I got a second anyway, so.
Heard that motion in second. Any additional discussion? Supervisor, excuse me, Presiding Judge Moss, please come down.
There is a lot of travel which is required. You don't get a choice, required to occur out of county. We have, for example, dependent children which are in other counties, and our people are required to meet with them before we do the termination of parental rights hearings. That's just one of many, many, many examples. I understand everything you're saying, Supervisor Johnson. You're right. There's a big hole, but I think throwing a hand grenade into the room is going to, you could bring a lot of court processes to a stop, and that's going to create a lot of issues. And I'm not just talking about this. I'm talking about criminal cases. Judges sometimes get assigned out of county because we're Arizona Superior Court judges. It's just, it's not, we may be sitting primarily in Mojave County, but I'm handling six cases for other counties because we have conflicts. They have conflicts, we have conflicts, so we do theirs, they do ours. And so saying that
I'll take care of that, Mr. Chairman. Can I amend my motion?
I I think I'll stop, but thank you for that.
Supervisor Johnson.
Okay, Supervisor Gold?
Yes.
I make amend the motion that's non-mandated travel.
Out-of-county travel.
Out-of-county travel.
Heard that motion in second. Assessor Kench, you want to come down?
A lot of the conferences, it's conference season. It is not mandated. I understand that. But a lot of these, we paid for, so it's going to cost us money not to go. If you if you do insist on putting a a travel restriction, might I suggest starting within 30 or 60 days so then they don't sign up for these. I know that I'm supposed to be leaving for one today, and then it's out-of-county as our tax conference that I go to every year. And then I'm also supposed to be going to another one that's out-of-county, actually out-of-state. I've I've waited seven years because I am conservative like that, waiting for it to come close to home. But again, I'll lose all that money, and we'll lose all that money because we've already paid for it. So I just want that to be an issue as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the concept is is good to keep talking about, but I feel like this has not been really evaluated, and I think it's fast and loose, and it's going to be chaos. Supervisor Bishop, it looks like you want to make a comment, or no?
No.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
No? I appear to have it. Do you have it? So ordered.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Bishop, or excuse me, Supervisor Johnson.
I would make a motion that we put a pause on, or we stop all general fund building projects, except those funded by other means such as grants until further notice.
Discussion.
Heard that motion in second. Supervisor Angus.
What about what we're doing? Don't we have contracts? Don't we have to honor contracts and things like that? Again, this is so reckless.
I don't believe we have any buildings going that are under contract.
You have nothing going on now?
Chairman Linganfelter, if I may add.
Attorney Esplin?
What I can think of is the animal shelter. That's under contract, and it's being built at the moment.
Don't we have, is is the, anything going on on the former jail site, or is there any other other architectural engineering design services going on as a part of a building project? Manager Elters?
It's not in the budget.
I'll bring it from home.
Mr. Chairman, Board members, the animal shelter is currently under construction. We have the Reach Out project that is currently in design, and it's not funded through the general fund. We have the sheriff's substations, both the one in Lake Havasu City and the one in Mojave Valley. Those are currently, one is in design and one is under consideration for a potentially an existing building that the sheriff presented to you a couple of weeks ago with the intent that there would be more progress on that. So those are what I would, what I remember and what I would consider capital projects within facilities, we have projects such as replacing carpets and 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 upgrading either HVAC units or fixing, repairing, upgrading. I am, I'm assuming those are not included in a CIP reference that Supervisor Johnson is discussing. At least, I hope that is not the case, but I bring it up specifically so we're in agreement that carpet replacement and and related HVAC upgrade, the the facility improvements in Lake Havasu City at the county college building that relates to covered parking, that is under contract. I'm assuming that those are continuing forward. So I So I, I will proceed with that understanding unless I'm corrected otherwise, but that is, those are lists of projects, Mr. Chairman and Board members that I know of that would be potentially impacted by whichever direction the board goes.
Mr. Chair?
Supervisor Johnson.
It was never intended to stop replacing carpets, air conditioners, any of that stuff that you mentioned. It was new construction and that wouldn't, and it only affects general fund money, so, and we already have the animal shelter going forward. It's already gone, obviously, we're not gonna go and stop that project. We're not stopping your grant funded building which is going on and the grant funding that the sheriff has for his buildings. But any general fund money would, would stop for new construction.
Any additional discussion? Again, I'll just go on record by saying that I appreciate the item, but I think that without doing it, before looking at additional analysis and impacts, it just seems really fast and loose and, and I think it's gonna take this county, these types of things, back to where it was twenty years ago, where the county had a lot of bad stuff going on as far as having dilapidated everything. Any other discussion? If you have a motion in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
No? I believe motion fails.
Chairman Lingandfelter, if I could, we're still on this motion, just trying to get some clarification on the hiring freeze. When is the effective date of that? Is it, and, and does it for people that are, you know, what if we've already extended an offer to someone? Is that...
Wasn't included in the motion.
Okay.
That's a good question.
Does the board wish to try to amend their motion to do that so we can get some more clarification?
Supervisor Johnson, do you wish to amend your motion, or no?
No.
Okay. Then Attorney Smith, you wish to speak on item forty-seven or forty-eight? Please.
Chairman Lingandfelter, Madam Clerk, Mr. County Manager, Board of Supervisors and Mr. Esplin, that was a question of clarification I had as well regarding the hiring freeze and the effective date. So we're down six attorney positions and we have offered jobs. For example, we have an attorney from Maryland who accepted a position, has placed her daughter in a special needs facility in the state of Utah and is starting, I believe, on her about September thirteenth. So she's already moved and moved her family to Utah, so I need to know whether or not this applies to her since we've already offered her the job. We also have a clerk that worked for us for free before he went to law school after he had a college degree. Worked for us for over a year, including out at Magnet, went to law school, kept in touch over the years, worked for free, and then we ended up paying him while he was in law school. And he also was extended a job offer, passed the bar and it's supposed to start in September. So he's been with us for four or five years and very loyal. So we actually have three positions that we offered a job that have been approved that are gonna be hired in September. So that's the question I have is whether or not the hiring freeze would apply to them. And I would just let you know that we are, as I said, down six attorneys. We're filling some of the positions with non-licensed attorneys at this time. And our, our trial calendar right now, we've already done seventy jury trials this year. We're about to pass a record that we've never had before in Mojave County. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe common sense would say that anybody who was offered a job prior to the motion would still have the job going forward. Any department head or elected official can meet with the county manager if they have a problem. And unfortunately, they'd have to meet with the attorney to see if he okay's that. I don't think there'd be a problem with those, those hires.
Manager Elters, the, the way the motions went through, do you see any problems with them not being fully articulated? I only ask because I feel like without proper, I mean, analysis and really looking at the, all the impacts of these things comprehensively, we're doing the citizens of Mojave County a disservice by going ready, fire, aim. I think there's gonna be a lot of unintended consequences. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. My biggest fear usually is going in an opposite direction from what the board establishes for staff and myself. So I thank you for giving me the opportunity to respond and for the clarification. Going forward, the direction that I will, and the implementation process that I will follow would be, as of today, the hiring freeze took place, so those that had extended offers as of today and can demonstrate that is the case, can go forward. Any other ones? If, if I deem them necessary to a critical function of a given department, I will seek clarification by bringing it back to the board at a board meeting or individually, whatever it takes. My intent is to follow the direction of the board as I understand it stated.
Thank you. I believe that concludes item number forty-seven. We'll move to item number forty-eight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At our special meeting, our attorney said that we couldn't make a motion, so I brought it back now so we could have it if the board so desires. Have this information made available to us prior to that meeting so that possibly we could look at making a decision. With that, I would make a motion to direct the county manager and chief financial officer to bring back a report to the Board of Supervisors at September twentieth, twenty twenty-three special budget meeting, a plan on what an eighteen percent across the board cut to all general fund departments would look like, and direct the county manager to send the report to the board at least one week prior to the September twenty, twenty twenty-three board meeting.
Second. Heard that motion in second. We have a couple of people signed up to speak. Jeannie Kinch, Professor Kinch? Wayne Hollins, you're on deck.
Thank you, Chairman Lingandfelter and the board. Agenda item forty-eight is an eighteen percent cut. Seventy-three percent of our budget is personnel expenses. Three percent of our budget is travel and training. Twenty-three percent of our budget is charges for mandated services and internal services. Cutting personnel is unavoidable if you look at those numbers. If you want us to take down eighteen percent, we would have to cut personnel, cut. We have been good faith players over the years and are running as lean as we can, as, as explained last time. And we are, we are already dramatically understaffed. So an eighteen percent across the board would be doing a lot of damage to our constituents. I couldn't do my job statutorily or otherwise, and I'm very concerned about this. I'm still very concerned over people that are supposed to be leaving tomorrow and today for the tax conference and whether we can or not, even though we paid for it. So I, I would hope that that's clear. Thank you.
Wayne Hollins.
Wayne Hollins, Golden Valley. You know, I don't know how many properties we've still got on the tax roll that are available to be sold, but there's some income there. My second thing is, you know, politicians, they are pretty good at raising money. They'll raise millions of dollars to get a job that pays them a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If they're so good at that, why can't they raise money for our budget? You know, then they take that money that they get to get elected and they pay to get their name out on your fake news outlets that you complain about all year long and paying these guys who you don't like that owns those companies. So we're short money, why don't we raise funds? And if I was confident that we're short eighteen point five million dollars and it was going to be spent wisely, I figured at twenty million dollars, there's two hundred thousand people in the, in the county, and I was confident that we would spend the money that made sense. That's a hundred dollars a person, that we wouldn't have to be trying to cut anything. Eight dollars and thirty-three cents a month would cover that if everybody paid it. If I was confident, I will go home, get my checkbook and bring you back a check for two hundred bucks for me and the wife, and that'll be our portion of that twenty million dollars in a heartbeat. I, I've asked before on, on, this has been years ago now, we have, do we have an incentive program for a person who works for the county, is doing a job and they are doing it in a certain way and they can do something and save, say ten thousand dollars a year, and we give them a thousand dollars, we save nine thousand dollars that year? And I was told, well, we don't have no money for that program. I, I don't see how that... My political math obviously is different than yours. So why don't we work on, we may not be able to raise all that money, but what can we do? And I know somebody's gonna say, oh, we're not allowed to do that or whatever. People made laws, we're people, change the law.
Thank you for speaking today.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I was in the legislature and we were in a budget crisis, one of the senators ran a bill to create the I Don't Think I Paid Enough Fund. And under the I Don't Think I Paid Enough Taxes Fund, you could make a donation to that fund. But I'll have to go and check because I believe Governor Napolitano vetoed the bill. I'll have to look that one up. Thank you.
It's a pleasure, the board.
Motion to approve.
Second. Heard that motion in second. Any additional discussion?
I'm sorry, excuse me, on item forty-eight, we already had a motion in a second.
I'm sorry about that. That was just additional discussion.
Right, so Supervisor Johnson made a motion, Supervisor Gould made the second.
Okay, thank you. Hearing no additional discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it. Do you have it, so ordered? We're gonna take a five minute break at the request of...
We did those.
We're gonna continue with the public hearings. Item number thirty-seven is a public hearing. Discussion and possible action, approve the revised Mojave County Department of Public Health, Environmental Health fee schedule to be effective September first, twenty twenty-three. We have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on item number thirty-seven? If no, I'll close the public hearing. It's a pleasure, the board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Heard that motion in second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it. Do you have it, so ordered? Item number thirty-eight is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing on item number thirty-eight. I have several people signed up to speak. Jennifer Esposito.
Thank you, Chairman Lingandfelter, Jennifer Esposito. I did a cursory review of the presentation for the economic development. And the one thing I thought was interesting was, well, we don't actually have any money to do anything to help economic development, therefore local communities need to form committees, which is great, you know, because I think when local people find a project that's not compatible with their vision for the community, like the solar project was, they rally and say, hey, we don't want that, or we, you know, we do want that, or whatever. So I'm, I don't mind the, the committee thing, but what occurred to me was, I think, a couple meetings ago, I believe that I had a flyer that Economic Development sent out where they say, hey, we're free training for businesses on how to make your business more effective. So we have money for that, but we don't have money to actually help bring in new businesses, which is what I sort of thought it was for. And I don't know how much it costs to, to compile this report and meet with all these communities and assess these, these things, but if we really don't have any money, then maybe why do we have, I don't know how many employees in Economic Development? Like, maybe that's something that, that could be handled privately or something, or scaled back in this, in these budget talks. I don't know, I'm just putting that out there because it did sort of say, well, we just don't have any money to help these communities, so they're gonna have to form their own committees, which is great. You know, I'd be more than happy to volunteer, to be involved in any committee in communities that, that matter to me, where I own property, or my husband owns property or whatever. But I'm just curious, if the department has no money, then why does the department exist? Just putting, putting that out there, I don't know, just seemed like a question that somebody should ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Angel Lund?
Hello, board members. My name is Angel Lund. I haven't lived here a huge amount of time, but I have over fifty years' experience being involved in planning, groundwater, Department of Ecology, colleges, you name it. I've worn many hats. I was just aware within the past couple of weeks of some of the things that are going on when it comes to planning for Golden Valley. No one I know in my part of Golden Valley has heard about this until now. We have not been informed, we have not been part of the plan, and we don't approve. We would like to have a meeting, some kind of scheduled meeting, so that the informed people could attend. We don't like being left out. Golden Valley, as you know, really isn't a city, it isn't a town, it is a spot in the road. But we have our citizens, and our citizens deserve to be included in anything that happens in Golden Valley. We are landowners, we're business owners, and we don't like being stepped on. Thank you.
Danielle Keck?
Hello, Danielle Keck, Golden Valley. Hello, Chairman Lingandfelter and supervisors. As all of you know, I reached out to each one of you asking who Ms. Ursim Bach was after she spoke at a previous meeting. Many of you responded and helped me get into contact with her. We were able to set up a meeting where she answered many of my questions and shared with me about the two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-seven strategic plan and comprehensive economic development strategy. And she shared that it, it's, it's gonna help her understand what kind of grant funding comes through and how she can place those into the different communities, which I think is neat. I learned that her session with Golden Valley did not have a very good turnout and only a handful of people attended. So Ms. Ursim Bach was very kind to offer to redo the Let's Talk session if I could gather a group of thirty, thirty to fifty people who would be willing to attend. And I'm pleased to announce that I have found a great group of residents in Golden Valley who will greatly appreciate the opportunity to participate in another session. Before the current plan is adopted, I just wanted to make sure that it's on record that we get another opportunity to work with the Economic Development Department to improve on our certain plan, current plan. I believe the second chance would bring our community together and help develop a more positive relationship between Golden Valley and Mojave County. And I just want to add that Ms. Ursim Bach and I, I just got an email from her this morning saying that it wasn't too... saying that it wasn't too late for us to get another meeting, and thank you for getting back to me. And that was it. Thank you.
Wayne Hollins, Golden Valley. I have him on item 38. On that strategic plan, on goal one, item F, there was create an education plan on water conservation, communicate to the business the value and need for water conservation. I've been up here many times in the last year or so, begging for that to happen. I went and got some education, read the books, went to meetings, asking to do that. I've been given classes on water conservation and water harvesting on my own. Been asking for help with this the whole time. Made the book that tells us how to do the stuff, but we failed to do it. Why did we waste our time? I went to that meeting. There were very few people that represented Golden Valley, which is not un-normal. But I think we have some new people in the valley. But again, water, if we don't have water, you can do whatever you want to up there. It's not going, you're not going to have anybody to speak to because there's nobody here. We can't do anything without water. We can't do anything with water without good soil. So the first thing we've got to do is educate the people, so we use those resources how it should be used and preserve those resources for it'll be there for when we can use it. We don't want to do solar farms, but, which I don't particularly like those either, but they have a place. There's not something that's going to go away. You just need to install them where there, it's not be planting a monocle. I know you guys heard all this stuff before. I'm getting tired of saying it. So are we serious about water, or are we just serious about talking about water? We have these boards and committees and all that stuff, but what are they doing? Do is the operative word here. If we don't do something, we're never going to get anything. So I beg you to help educate the people, make it where they want to do that kind of stuff, because it's not, it's not for me. I can do my own stuff. But they need help so they can know what to do, and we can have those resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Becky Foster.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Bishop.
I just wanted to...
We're in a public hearing, actually.
Okay.
I'll call on you after we're done.
Sure.
Becky Foster, thank you. Mr. Bond, Thomas Bond, you're on deck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, Mr. Elders, Mr. Espin. Becky Foster for the record. I'm not here to speak for, speak for or against this plan. I think it's a good idea that they are doing this, but I think it also needs to be tied into, in a larger sense, with the county general plan. It needs to be coordinated with that, and that general plan should be every 10 to 15 years updated. And I've spoken to you about this Supervisor Ling and Felter and the Chris App McCormick report, and I don't know if you still have one here in the county anywhere. I have one at home. I've been looking for it. It's probably on a shelf somewhere, but I haven't seen it since 2020. It takes a lot of work. It takes a lot of meetings and a lot of effort to set forth a general plan, and it needs to be set forth as to what the supervisors want and what the general public wants, what we, the people, how we want to see our county grow. And if you could maybe coordinate some way with this plan and incorporate it with a general plan, I really encourage the board to have community unity meetings, like we did in, I think it was '85, '86. And we developed the county's first overall comprehensive general plan. And rather than changing the zoning ordinances on a piecemeal basis and changing the plan on a piecemeal basis by bureaucrats, it's better to have these meetings every 10 to 15 years and find out what all the stakeholders want. And by all the stakeholders, I mean, community colleges, the schools, utility companies, the tribes, all the different cities within the county. The general public was invited. We had very, very good turnout for that. And so I think this is a good start for an economic development plan. I did notice that they mentioned that solar companies are having a great interest in Mojave County. Well, of course they are, and it's not something that I personally want to see in Mojave County. And I think that we need to have these meetings and you need to let the Economic Development Department know what you want and what your constituents want, what we, the people, want. Thank you.
Greetings, Supervisors. Thank you for having me. Greetings, Supervisor Ling and Felter, Chairman. You must forgive me. I have a little bit of a laryngitis this week, but I wanted to speak today, and I know that I'm on the clock right now. I am also, which is very kind of Tammy Ursbach, with the Film and Tourism Committee with Golden Valley, besides our Facebook group and our little private group that we're going to go CPAC with. So I do appreciate that. I'm going to speak about Mojave County as a whole, but also mainly for Golden Valley. And I'm going to try and be as brief as possible. Everyone knows that Golden Valley was originally just a development. It turned into kind of a town, or I would just say an area, a community, that was there and has been there for a long time. It has now over 9,000 people, and even in our Mojave County study, it stated that there's 9,000 people there and there needs to be some sort of an infrastructure that can be at least started working on now. Now, of course, counties broke, got it. $18 million, got it. We need revenue. We need private revenue, not just grants, but private economic revenue, especially on something that is just sitting there. I am from, forgive me for this, California. I was involved in California politics when it was Republican, and their surplus budget for one year was $1 billion. So is Florida. So is Texas. Why? Because of tourism and bringing in revenue, and also the film industry, believe it or not. I spoke with Matt Lee Jones of Arizona Film Commission, and I'll be very brief on this because I have only a minute. They're interested, so we're going to be putting our Biograph Studios in Golden Valley, and we want to actually get private grants and privatize money to have maybe like 20, 30 acres and actually build. And we're going to have it, yes, a British motif, but we're going to be building a Biograph Studios there that the state of Arizona wants and has been begging for. This is the Arizona Film Commission. Golden Valley is 90 minutes away from Vegas. It's 30 minutes away from Laughlin. It's in a great area, and we want to keep the area small. We want to make it a boutique, beautiful town. We don't want to disturb anybody, but we want to be able to have it grow the proper way, and that's what we're doing. And I am so in favor of trying to keep what Tammy and Gina has put together, and if you have any money at all in the budget, let's approve this. Let's keep it going with our committees. We need this desperately, and that's what's going to save Mojave County with outside revenue, and I've got my thumb on it already. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you. That was the last speaker. I'm going to close the public hearing. I believe Supervisor Bishop had a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to thank Wayne Hollins for volunteering to be the chairperson for the Educational Plan on Water Conservation for Golden Valley. And as far as Ms. Lund, anytime Golden Valley would like to have a meeting, I am happy to have meetings for Golden Valley. In fact, I've offered this auditorium many, many times to the Golden Valley residences because there's not really a place in Golden Valley to hold a meeting. So we can absolutely have a meeting anytime this boardroom is available. So I welcome that, and y'all have my phone number, and I'm available up until about nine o'clock in the evenings, and I wake up about 5:00, so bring it on. Thank you.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Johnson, that was a motion to approve?
Yes, sir.
You heard that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Heard that motion and second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none.
I do have one question of...
Sorry, Supervisor Bishop.
Tammy, I understand that you're going to have a follow-up meeting with the Golden Valley residents. Is that going to be able to be included in this, or do we need to maybe continue this to the next?
No, this plan, this plan is for the county as a whole, but at the back of the document is the individual community, and those individual community plans that we have, those committees that we set up, those are ongoing. And so that, what they do in that next meeting will just continue, just like everything. This is going to be a living document, so it will be reviewed quarterly, and we're working on, everything that we do will be worked on quarterly and then revised yearly.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you very much.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. Eyes appear to have it. Do you have it? So ordered. Regular agenda, item number 39. Director Lotosky?
Do you have anyone signed up for this, Mr. Chair?
No one's signed for item number 39.
Make a motion to approve.
Heard that motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Heard that motion and second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes appear to have it. Do you have it? So ordered. Item number 40. We don't have anyone signed up to speak on item number 40.
Motion to approve.
Heard that motion. Do I have a second? Heard that motion and second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Eyes appear to have it. Do you have it? So ordered. Item number 41. We don't have anyone signed up to speak today on item number 41.
Motion to approve, item 41.
Heard that motion. Do I have a second? Heard that motion and second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I wasn't sure what the vote was on that, in that court.
Chairman Ling and Felter, I heard Supervisor Bishop vote in favor, and I heard Supervisor Johnson vote negative. The other three, I heard nothing.
Do we need to call for the question again?
It's over then. One to one. She loses.
Well, I voted, I voted yes.
I voted yes, too.
And that's usually the assumption unless I hear a no.
Thank you. All right, item number 42. We don't have anyone signed up to speak for item number 42. What's the pleasure of the board?
That's your district, Hildy, I think. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Heard that motion and second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
The ayes appear to have it. Do you have it? So ordered. Item number 43. We have no one signed up for item number 43. What's the pleasure of the board? Motion to approve. Heard that motion and second. Any additional discussion?
I just...
Supervisor Gould.
I just want to thank Director Lotosky for doing this. I thought that was pretty creative to move vehicles around so we get the best use and the best bang for our buck. Good job.
Absolutely. Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes appear to have it. Do you have it? So ordered. Item number 44. We have one person signed up, but I do not believe Mr. Scotty McClure is here.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Heard that motion and second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes appear to have it. Do you have it? So ordered. Item number 45. We have a few people signed up to speak. Stephen Robinson, I believe he's here. Jeff Esposito, I believe he's here.
Wayne Hollins, Golden Valley. I'm at this point undebated on what to do with that. I think there could be some improvement in the operation of the thing out there. I don't like having the office in Kingman when the whole thing is out there in Golden Valley, and every resident that's on that system lives in Golden Valley. It kind of doesn't make sense to me to have the office in Kingman. But other than that, I think there are people out there, and this is where I would be worried about, was who would be appointed on the board to run the thing. I personally don't care to be in that position. I'm kind of trying to be retired to a certain extent, but I don't know that you all have any exceptional qualifications to run the board either, so I, that basically is my, where I'm, got a gray area there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer Esposito. There's been a lot of questions and a lot of, you know, kind of fear mongering, oh my gosh, what will happen if we actually let the people who have skin in the game have control of the decisions, and how would that work? And there's been so many issues raised. For instance, my husband, who used to work for Eagle Realty, went and checked the parcels, and it appears that the majority of the GVID infrastructure sits on property that's not owned by GVID, but that the parcels are listed as Mojave County. There's a lot of issues as to, since we pay different portions of different people's salaries, and who knows, I don't know what portion we pay of the office rent or whatever, what assets do we actually own related to, does the billing software come with that, and so on and so forth. And I think a lot of that would be best dealt with. I would like to see this move forward, absolutely, 100%, but I think that before the public hearing is held, there should be a question and answer work session where people can ask a question and then get back in line if they have another question, because a lot of the problem is we get three minutes and there's not a lot of time to get it in. Now, I realize that there's been a longstanding idea that it's just a bunch of naysayers, and I told you I would bring you more people who signed the petition. The reality is, is that because of the demographics in the area, we'll never get to the 50% plus one. It's just not practical. But there are a lot of people who would like to see an elected board. I do have one question for Mr. Espin, and given that GVID is incorporated in the same way municipality is incorporated for the purpose of incurring bond debt, does GVID as a taxing district participate in the state insurance pool? Because obviously, anything that's going on with the GVID right now would transfer with the district. The grant money would transfer, the ARPA money would transfer. The only thing that would be different was who's making the decision. So instead of paying Mojave County roughly $400,000 a year to operate it, the new board that would be elected would decide, maybe we want to make an offer to Valley pioneers and see what they would charge us to do the billing and the maintenance. They have a full-time maintenance crew. They have an engineer. They have the staff. Whatever those decisions, I don't want to be on that board that, I'm not doing this for me. I'm just doing this as a property owner. But I do think that this is a process that should be... But I do think that this is a process that should be started because if we kick the can down the road now, we do an advisory board or this or that and, you know, we're just losing time where we have an election cycle coming up. I don't know if this would be on the August cycle or the November cycle of 2024. So starting it now is not something that's going to happen where, poof, here's your, here's your district. Have a good time, you know, it doesn't work like that. It's a big ball of knots. It needs to be untangled in a very measured and thoughtful way so that the process goes smoothly and that the incoming people would work with the county in a transition period to make sure that it's just got success for everyone. So I'll give you these signatures I collected.
Thank you. Philip Robinson.
Good afternoon, Philip Robinson. I'm up here to talk about the GVID. It's, I like what you did last time when you got rid of the surcharge. That's awesome, thank you. Even though I do like Wayne, I harvest my rainwater. I think we need to do a lot of that out there. I, I think you need to promote that throughout the county. I agree with Wayne about that. Where I'm sticking on is the assets. When the county took over, all the assets went out of the yard out there on Chino. And then Pioneer, I don't know if you guys rent that out back there? That's where I see all the county equipment at now. It's back behind Pioneer. That's the road, okay. Well, I still don't know if that's where the assets are being parked. But everything used to be right there on Chino. What's this gonna do with our machine that we have to put our car in whenever it goes down? Who's gonna take care of that? You know, I, I've got a lot of big questions, I agree with. Jennifer, we need to have a roundtable. You know, I don't know if we should have it here. We need the board involved in this also. I don't know how to make it any simpler. I know it's gonna take time to do, but I don't want to get it all thrown out and find out, oh, shit, we screwed up. You know, I don't want that. I don't want to come back in another 10 years, you know, I'm an old man on a cane and all that and go, hey, we screwed up that. You need to take over. I don't want that either. That's what Finn did was when you guys contracted Finn. They screwed our water up bad. You should remember that and you should remember that. Finn, they screwed us up. And I don't know if you guys are still recovering from that or not. Or Fan? Fan, that was named the construction company. But that's all I wanted to say to you. I just, I want, I want to be able to go forward, you know? I don't want to take 20 steps back. You know, we gained a lot, you've done what we, what we want. Now we need to go forward with this. Thank you.
Angel Lund. Danielle Keck, you're on deck.
Hello again. My name's Angel Lund, Golden Valley. And yes, I'm on GVID water. We had no idea when we purchased our place, the mess that GVID was in. We had no idea that a well driller had somehow messed things up and that it is still a mess and that we still need another well. I've heard something about lawsuits. I don't know exactly what that is. That's fine. Right now, you are our experts. You are the ones who have been dealing with all of this. But without our knowledge, without a lot of our participation, we need to be able to participate in that before you just throw it over to us. I don't think any of us is an expert in hydrology or where things should be, you know, a well drilled and the different operations of the pumps and things. I know that many times since moving here, I've lost my water for many days. I know that there's a lot of problems with the system. And I know that it needs to be fixed. But we need to know what's going on. Please don't leave us in the dark. You might want to make a shareholder board or some kind of an advisory group so that we can watch and see what's going on, so that we have at least some control over our water. Without our water, our land is worth nothing. There needs to be an audit. When I go back and I look at the comments, 2017, and they're talking about missing money? I mean, come on now. There needs to be a lot of things done. Right now, we're not able to take everything over, but we need to be a piece of this.
Danielle Keck.
Thank you, Board. Danielle Keck, Golden Valley, GVID metered customer. Chairman and Supervisors, I sent a letter over the weekend voicing some of my concerns that I personally have with GVID. But there was one that I did not mention in my letter that's been kind of just stirring in the back of my head. And that concern is about a presentation that was given at a previous board meeting. That meeting was about PFAS, I think is what they called it, which are also known as forever chemicals. If you remember from the video, these chemicals can cause long-term health and reproductive problems, especially in pregnant women. Currently, there is no regulation about what is considered a safe level exposure. Another thing I remember from the video was that GVID did not meet the federal requirements that will be coming out to monitor these levels because we are so small. I want to know if GVID and Development Services have researched any further about testing for PFAS in our water or if they have plans to in the future. I would also like to know if GVID expects the customers to be the ones to advocate for this water to be tested and treated for these chemicals. I think before a conversion, we, the consumers and residents, should be provided with a follow-up about how the county is planning on addressing the forever chemicals that could be contaminating our water sources. And this is not just for GVID customers, but all of Mojave County. Thank you.
That was our last speaker. What's the pleasure of the board? Supervisor Bishop.
I want to thank everyone from Golden Valley that lives within the GVID for their comments, their emails, their phone calls. I'm getting a lot of pros and cons. Initially, everybody that I spoke to wanted to take over GVID and run it themselves. And then they wanted, maybe instead of doing that, maybe become an advisory board to tell this board what to do. But, you know, it's, it's obvious that there's a lot of different opinions in Golden Valley. So it's really hard to put together an advisory board since it's difficult for people to come to a consensus as to what they want this water district to be. But I want to thank this board and all previous boards that have stepped up and, and served as directors for GVID. They've done a really good job. I think our staff has done an amazing job with trying to keep water in the line so that when, when GVID customers turn on their faucet, they get water out of it. And I think last year when the well went down and GVID customers realized that they would be several days without water, the panic set in and it was not a pretty thing to experience for those that lived in the district or for this board or our staff members within GVID. So with all of this discussion that came up, I made a public comment that I would not oppose the citizens taking back their water company. It was theirs to begin with, we've managed it for years. If they want it back, I will not be the one to step in the way. So with that being said, I will make a motion that we proceed with the conversion process as outlined in ARS 48-1018 and set a public hearing for October the 2nd to proceed.
You've heard that motion.
Second.
Heard that motion, second. Any additional discussion?
If I could just jump in real quick.
Attorney Esplin.
And just to be clear, that means that you're going under option, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call it option one, the conversion process and not do option two is the, the owners of at least 50% would, would have a petition. I'm just making clear, we're not doing it that way.
Right, the first option.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item number 46, Supervisor Angus.
Thank you. I was gonna go into a long story, but it's late. This is an allocation to Bullhead City to put a, a park for physically handicapped children as we have in the Mojave Valley Park. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Heard that motion, second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item number 49 is simply approving Mojave County's comments on the near-term Colorado River Operations Draft Supplemental Environmental Impact Statement. I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Heard that motion, second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. We are adjourned.